All right, good evening, welcome to the June 9th Board of Selectmen meeting. If you can all rise and pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to say, can I get any man? I'm gonna move off the minutes, we got a lot of stuff to do, so we'll just try and catch up that later. So again, we got a lot of stuff on correspondence, so... Think we probably want to move with the school committee? You guys all here? Yeah? I'm looking for our failure to elect item here, where is that?
Two on the correspondence.
Oh, there we go, thank you. So, we're gonna be, we're meeting with the school committee tonight as a joint meeting, and you guys will have to swear in, obviously, so come on up if you'd like. And the reason for that is we have a failure to elect for, during the election, for a school committee member. There was a write-in candidate that declined the seat, so that resulted in a failure to elect. So the school committee is here to do a joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen to appoint a member, and we've got two candidates. One of them's here tonight?
We only have one.
Michael?
I sent you an email.
We have two Michaels, right? You're Michael H., right?
We just have one coming tonight.
Okay. And are you on, Michael, you're on ConCom right now? I mean, finance? FinCom, okay. You're on FinCom. Trying to keep the two Michaels straight here. We have two Michaels that have come forward, so... And another candidate that come forward and decided not to pursue it. So, you guys should probably open your meeting.
Yes, okay. Georgetown School Committee will open its meeting.
Excellent. Thanks for your time. So what are your thoughts?
Well, the other Michael is away on business.
Right.
So I'm assuming that that means that he's no longer, like I wasn't gonna hold off and do another meeting. So it was my understanding that if he did not attend, that we have the one individual, which he was fine with that. How do you?
So, we have a little bit of a snafu if presuming this gentleman tonight and we were gonna pursue appointing somebody tonight. Couple of things, we can interview the candidate tonight, hold off on a vote, and either if we can get to one of your board meetings, if this gentleman can come in, your meeting on Thursday?
Yes.
So, there's an option there if our board can do that, or to bring in the other candidate to our next meeting, which is the 23rd, Janet? I think you said? And I don't know what your thoughts are if you want to be able to interview both candidates, or if you and the board feel strongly about, you know, appointing the gentleman that's here tonight. We have a bit of a snafu because he's on the FinCom and we have some line item transfers, and their FinCom meeting is the 18th. So if we did appoint that, how do you see your last name?
Hinchcliffe.
Hinchcliffe, thank you. If we did appoint Mr. Hinchcliffe this evening, we would probably have to put the appointment off to post 19th, so to the 19th, maybe.
Okay.
Because we've got line item transfers, and if he is not, if he is appointed before then, he has to resign, and then we don't have a quorum because Reggie Tarterf resigned.
Oh, okay.
And we have line item transfers that we're gonna go through tonight, and then the FinCom has to vote on him as well, and they need a quorum to do that. And that would, they would not have a quorum if Michael resigned.
Okay. Well, the communication that I had with Mr. McManus, the other individual, was, you know, he said he was away on business through Wednesday. And again, like I said, I just assumed, I'd sent you an email, a couple of emails today, just giving you a heads up because so much happened today. The other individual also...
Backed out.
Backed out. So, when he had told me that he'd be out through Wednesday, I kinda assumed that that was no longer an option. So I don't know, what...
Alan, Mike, you have any point of view on that?
Can I just make a statement for us? So, typically what we like to try to do on our end is to get a recommendation from the committee that's actually wants to appoint an individual if there are multiple appointments, because you guys are the ones really doing all the due diligence if it's your candidates. So it might be worthwhile if you guys had a, when you meet on Thursday, that you guys had your deliberation and made a note. It's not a vote for the individual, but it would be a vote of support to make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. That way there, then we can take that advice, and unless we find some crazy reason why we wouldn't support you, we'd probably follow your advice.
Okay. So, thinking that Mr. McManus, we reach out to him and say, if you're here and you are still interested in the position, that we can interview you.
23rd?
And...
And there's this Thursday.
And you're not meeting before the 23rd again, are you?
No.
So it's up to you guys. You can determine how you want to make that decision. If he's not there, then maybe you reach out to him individually, or whatever, that's up to you guys.
We can invite him to attend this Thursday's meeting, right? We can speak to him there.
Sure.
We can speak to Mr. Jenkinston tonight, and then we can have a discussion.
And then that all works out, too, with the timeline.
Yeah, and then we'll come back on the 23rd, and we'll take your recommendation, and we'll have a conversation, we'll have to do another joint meeting, and then make a combined vote.
Can you guys do the 23rd as a board?
I don't, I'm not sure, but...
As long as you get a quorum here, and you have the recommendation.
You don't need a quorum.
Oh, you don't?
Oh, you don't need a quorum for that?
Five votes.
Oh, five total between the combined boards? Okay. So you need five votes between the combined boards, so... Here, you can pull that up?
Does that sound fair?
Thoughts?
Yeah, that sounds great, thank you.
Well, it is a joint appointment, and I realize what Phil's saying, we certainly wouldn't want to follow it, or at least, probably want to follow the direction of the school committee, but it doesn't mean that we have to either.
No.
Yeah, so, just to put that in, I mean, you know...
Unless we find some reasons that we wouldn't follow that, absolutely.
So, if I want to get the, what's going down, you're planning now, you're meeting on Thursday on interviewing both candidates?
If that, if Mr. McManus is available, we could have him.
We could interview him tonight.
Now, can I? Could I ask, are you available for Thursday?
Well, he's here tonight, so we'll talk to him about it anyway.
Well, that's right.
Both boards are here, so we'll at least knock that candidate, you know, interview off, and then you guys, if you can, on Thursday, if he can attend, you know, have that meeting, and then make a recommendation when we get together on the 23rd to bring the two candidates forward as far as how we want to handle it. If you think that makes sense.
Yes, that works great.
That works?
I appreciate it, yes.
All right. So, Michael, why don't you come on up, and we have your letter here, so we appreciate you coming forward, so thank you for doing that. It's fantastic to see a few citizens come forward for it, so we much appreciate that. So, I'll open it up to questions from joint board members here, and fire away. Anybody?
Okay, sure, we can start if you don't mind. Do you want these?
I have the letters.
Well, this is just a copy of, you can cast them on, just the questions that I had.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for coming. So as an effective school committee, you play an important role in keeping the school district on track and setting policies that affect all the children in the district. The school committee sets the vision and goals for the school district. It holds the district accountable for results, hires and evaluates the superintendent, and develops and implements the district's policy. With that being said, what experience do you have collaborating with groups, and what's your vision for an excellent school district?
I am the executive director of a nonprofit organization. It's called the Institute for Domestic and International Affairs, and we actually do co-curricular activities primarily for high school students. So I have a lot of experience in working with, working with a whole series of school districts right now, admittedly from a vendor perspective, but what we do, we run conferences. So every December, and we're based out of New Jersey, every December we have about 65 or so different schools attending, and so I've had a lot of experience in working, working and delegating in that sort of a group environment, working with actual, whether it's teachers or administrators, or in some cases, the actual school boards, not only getting the students there, but developing the program curricularly and academically to making it kind of as robust as it can be for everyone who attends. And in terms of a strong vision for a strong school district, I think it's about, it's taking a pulse of what people are looking for and making it happen within the realm of what's possible financially and practically. It's easy to, it's easy to have the unlimited budget and say, we want to do everything, but there are choices, and a lot of it comes down to sort of priority, priority setting. And sort of keying in on, you know, I have my own ideas, obviously, on priorities, but keying in on what the broader community is looking for, I think is important as well.
So you're based out in New Jersey, do you travel?
I do travel. We do three, three big events a year, so it's essentially three long weekends a year that I travel, but otherwise I'm mostly here.
Yeah, okay.
The internet is amazing.
It is, it is. Did you guys want to ask any questions from that?
Well, yes, I actually had an opportunity to look at your website, which is very, very impressive, so maybe you could tell us a little bit more about the programs. You do civics education, is that right?
Exactly.
So do you facilitate curriculum and programs for Model, are you involved in Model UN and Model Congress?
That's exactly what we do, yes.
Okay.
So, Model United Nations and Model Congress, what we do is, we bring high school students primarily together and talk about kind of global issues or domestic issues, depending on which it is. And over the course of four days, they solve all the problems in the world, or all the problems in the US. And it's, you know, it's a lesson, that's one of the goals, obviously, but really what we're doing is we're getting the students interested in what's going on around them and informed in what's going on around them. You know, it's easy to, it's easy to talk about Medicare, or student loans, or global warming, all of these issues in kind of an abstract sense, but suddenly, they're a senator trying to solve the problem. So we put them in those shoes, and they actually come up with good solutions. You know, it's a chance for them to be creative in the solutions. They're not allowed to create subcommittees to further investigate stuff, as often happens. But we really push them to address the issues and learn more about it. Hopefully it's to get them involved, but at the very least, they're getting informed.
Sounds very exciting, thank you.
They're fun weekends.
I'm just thinking, you have experience, you know, overseeing this program that is preparing students for roles like those...
I should have come to you first.
You still can.
Are you directly involved in creating the curriculum that happens, or are you, I mean, as the executive director, as an executive director in a nonprofit can be, just the fundraising arm, can you, how, what, how hands-on are you?
It's a little bit of both. I am not the one sort of physically writing up the curriculum. We have a group of, I guess it's about 20 teachers that are collaborating on new curricular unit plans and things of that nature that we actually wind up giving out to the schools to help them prepare. So I am, I am not the one writing it, sort of overseeing the process, making sure that it's happening.
Do teachers work for your organization, or do you draw teachers who work in schools, who then come and...
Exactly, they're working for the schools.
Right, so you have an understanding of what the roles, then the challenges? Are these teachers coming from a range of different districts, school types?
They're coming from the inner-city to the very private schools.
So you have a range, that's great.
And that's the idea, it's not, we're not trying to make a private school curriculum or inner-city school curriculum, we're trying to make something more broadly valuable.
Sure, so I imagine you sit at the table for discussions about what the challenges are
Exactly.
in serving the whole range.
It's a very broad spectrum.
Yeah, that broad spectrum, good. Well, that's, that's, I think would be a very useful perspective to have on our, on our committee.
What level of engagement do you have with the students? Do you have some, do you have a lot?
I, it varies a lot on the individual students. At our program in December, for example, there are about, there should be about 1,200 students there, in total. So it's hard to be directly involved with 1,200 students. Out of that, I will be very directly involved with, I'm gonna say 50 or so, and I actually have the opportunity to kind of watch them through their high school careers. I also do a lot of work, our entire conference staff is college students, who is cheap labor. So, I mean, I have a lot.
It's great, to have that balance of both.
Exactly, yeah.
Now, does Georgetown, do we participate in this program?
Not yet, or not that I know of, at least.
I just, I'm concerned about the conflict of interest if you're on the school committee. As a, I mean, that's probably my one thought, is when I looked at your website, I also went to the website, and I loved it, and was very excited at the thought of having somebody who has your experience in schools, and then I, and then I thought, but he won't be able to sell it.
We do have DECA, which, you know, it is a small school, limited number of students and teachers, so you, but...
It's an interesting program, but it does, it would give some visibility to it, which...
And there are other, there are other programs that load ours out there, so there's...
Right.
It wouldn't be exclusive.
Right, okay.
You never know, it's something to talk about.
Now tell me the age of your kids?
My daughter, my, is, she'll be two in August.
Oh, okay.
So, so in a couple of years, she'll be...
In a couple of years, yeah. That's exciting. I love the fact that she is so young and you're interested in getting involved, I think that's great. Thank you.
Right now she needs a lot of help counting.
Sometimes so do I. What about you, you gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
I have a couple more questions. Thank you for stepping forward, we really do appreciate it. How long have you been on FinCom?
It was a year, it'll be here sometime in the summer.
Okay. And so, just give us a little bit of your experience in, you know, on FinCom, and, you know, did it meet your expectations, or, you know, what were your expectations going in? What are your expectations possibly coming out?
I feel like, few questions. I think it did, it's the, I guess I didn't really know what to expect going in, I talked to Sandy a lot. I think it is a very steep learning curve, which I think was one of the challenges. Very steep learning curve, but also very accessible, and I think I got a lot out. I'd like to think that I contributed as well to it. So a manageable learning curve at the same time. And I think being able to, kind of having a taste of that, and the school side, I think there's an opportunity to kind of put the two together and, you know, try to be a value almost to both sides, having experience there.
I mean, if I had it my way, all elected officials would spend at least a year on FinCom.
Thank God we don't have it his way.
I know, I have heard you mention that before, that's interesting, because it's everything that...
Yeah, that's where the budget, you know, passes, you know, the pass-throughs and everything, so you learn a lot there, so...
Yeah.
Thank you.
First of all, thank you for coming forward, and for your service already. So, question is, so I'm looking at your letter, it says, "To reiterate, my intent is not to disagree with the existing committee," right? But what if we need you to disagree with the existing committee, and/or the school superintendent, or, you know, the administration? You guys have to make some not-so-fun decisions, right? And you're not all going to agree, so I guess my question is, I mean, I definitely see the focus on the education and all that piece of it, but I think the town also needs someone that's gonna say, you're wrong, and advocate why you think you're right. So, just give me your take on that.
Sure, I agree, and my reason for putting that in there is, the previous sentence or two felt like I was gonna be a, don't spend money anywhere on anything sort of person, which was not my intent. I speak my mind, and I'm happy to disagree at times when I think, when I do disagree and when I think should be said. I'm not, I'm certainly not, my intent is not to join the school committee just to say yes to everything, and...
Excuse me.
Was there a time on FinCom where, kind of was you against the world, or you were in the minority where you had to stand up for something, or?
Not, there's a lot of consensus on FinCom, which, and it's consensus at the end of a process. So, day one, I think there are a lot of sort of disparate opinions. Day, or meeting five, it's a lot more consensus, there's a lot of work that kind of happens in between. Sitting at the, at the town meeting when we were, you know, giving our recommendations out, I was hearing in my head, all of our recommendations, save for one or two, I think were unanimous. And my thought at the town meeting was, does it sound like FinCom is just... And I think from the outside, that, that's kind of what I heard, even having, having sat there. But I think the reality was, it was a lot of those, a lot of those disagreements were hashed out in the room, and consensus built kind of solutions, we came to a conclusion, rather than it being a four-to-three vote, or something like that.
Great, thank you.
Mike, I like the experience you have from an executive leadership standpoint. You serve on an executive committee at your firm, this is another executive board that we have here in town. I think you've got some, you must have some, tell me about your financial experience when it comes to the P and L at your firm?
Sure.
If you could just share, what responsibilities do you have?
Sure, I have, I have ultimate responsibility. And I answer to a board, so it's not just...
And you've been through a budget cycle with us, so understanding the nuances. Yeah, you spent another few more years there, you'd get it down to rock science, but I think, personally, I think one year's enough.
You're always becoming like Dan Arndt.
But no, I...
It's not such a bad...
Train man. It's not so bad, I know.
Balance, it's all about balance, my friend.
Yeah, but no, I, I concur, I think that you bring some strong value to the table here. Gary, any?
Well, I find that if you wait, a lot of your questions get answered, so... I've seen you in action on the FinCom, I've made a lot of the meetings, and you were very involved. So, I'm fine at this point.
That's good.
I'm sorry, I was late, tardy. Do we have one candidate in front of us tonight in person?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I just wanted to point out how exciting it is right now, I think, for the school committee, and I think my committee members will, will also agree with, you know, the new school pro, the building project, with the renovations being done at the middle high school. There's just a lot going on, and I think it's, it's great that you would want to come on at this time. I really think it's a good opportunity for us, because you do have such a great background, and I'm glad you have that FinCom background, too. I've been on Budget and Finance, the committee, twice, and I'm still a little intimidated by the numbers, but the superintendent and my fellow committee members are great with helping me along with it, but I think that's great that you have that background.
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, there is a lot going on.
Yeah, there is, exciting things.
Yeah, it's all good, it's all good things.
It is, it's all good, everything will work out great.
Could I just ask, I mean, if you don't have any questions for us, that's fine, but did you have any questions for us as school committee?
Not, not per se. I mean, I, at the risk of, of saying that I've worked with a lot of school boards, I've, I've seen a lot, and I've felt a lot, so I feel, I think, pretty comfortable.
Pretty comfortable, great.
I'm sure there's a learning curve there as well.
Just wanted to give you a chance.
I appreciate it.
Sure. It's great.
All right, I don't have any questions, but thank you for coming forward, and thanks for your service on FinCom, and getting involved. Talk to three neighbors and get them involved. Three deep, three wide, let's go. All right? You know? But no, that's great, so basically what we were talking about is, the other Michael couldn't, couldn't make it today because he's traveling on business, so they're gonna invite them, him to their meeting on Thursday. School committees have a meeting on Thursday, so hopefully that candidate can come forward and meet with you, and then we would reconvene on the 23rd after your recommendation at that time, and, you know, any information you guys find out, forward to us, and then we can have a joint meeting on the 23rd, and at that point, make a vote for an appointment.
So...
Does that sound right?
Just to clarify, if Mr. McManus decides that he does not want to, you know, to attend the meeting on Thursday, we would still keep the 23rd?
We could have him to the 23rd as well. If he would, if he wants to pursue it and would like to come to that.
And if he no longer wishes to pursue the position, then we...
Right, then we have an easy decision to make.
An easy decision to make.
And don't keep getting any second thoughts and bailing. Because you know where you live.
I don't.
I'll find him. But yeah, that's, so, no, that's fine, that's great if that works with you guys. You guys comfortable with that?
Yeah, that's great, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for putting us on the agenda, I appreciate it, thank you.
Any appointments that are made, it's made until the next election cycle?
Yes, correct, yep. So then if you love what you do, you have to run.
And then the individuals running for that seat will run for the unexpired term.
Right. So...
Right, if anybody else wants...
Right, if it was a two-year, you know, that type of thing. Right. Absolutely.
Okay, great.
Okay, good, and you guys need to close the meeting.
Okay. Georgetown School Committee will close the meeting. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Thanks, guys. All right, our second order of business here would be joint meeting with the library trustees for the selection of a library trustee to fill an unexpired term until the next election of May 12, 2015. We have a resignation of Thomas Fauzarino, the library trustees, are our library folks here tonight? Oh, they're not here tonight? Okay, so we'll move that off.
They were gonna be interviewing the candidate Thursday.
Okay, so they're not here tonight, okay. So we'll move that one off. I mentioned the resignation of Reggie Tarter from the Finance and Advisory Board, effective, what was it, May 13th? May 12th? So I just want to say, on behalf of everybody in town and the Board of Selectmen and FinCom, Reggie, thank you so much for your service, you've, you've been fantastic, you've been doing a lot of things in this town, and we really appreciate it. So you'll be missed, don't be a stranger, but thank you so much for all of your time and dedication and your efforts.
Mr. Chairman?
Absolutely, thank you.
If I could add to that, I had the pleasure to serve at Reggie on Finance and Advisory Board. We're missing a rock, he's done a great job, and I would also like to extend personal congratulations for a great job on the Finance and Advisory Board, and Reggie, definitely gonna be missed, and like Stu said, don't be a stranger, so, but thank you for your service.
Absolutely, and the town moderator appoints members. If they're people interested, should they contact Beverly Enos?
Absolutely.
Okay, so our press over there, if you can, if you would do so, please put a message out in the paper that we're open to people that might want to serve on the Finance and Advisory Board. And if you do have interest, Beverly Enos is our town moderator, so she would be the person to contact. If you needed a conduit, then I would say, reach out to Board of Selectmen office. Janet Potano is our assistant there, and she can help direct you to the appropriate folks. So if there's anybody interested in coming forward to serve, we would, we'd love to see you and appreciate your time and efforts. All right, we had a resignation letter from Virginia Adams from the Board of Registars. We're getting new people and losing people. And her resignation takes place May 31st of 2014, and again, Virginia, thank you for your time and service and your efforts, we very much appreciate it. And is that an appointed position?
It is.
For the most part, so if there are people interested in serving on the Board of Registars, then please come forward, see Janet Potano as well.
It is one of, I think, our only partisan appointment. You have to have an equal number of Republicans and Democrats serve on the Board of Registrar.
Okay.
Well, I believe the town committees make the recommendations.
Okay.
So...
The Republican Board, so the town clerk already notified them.
So, it's Republican, so it would have to be a Republican that would be able to qualify for this position, and they should go through the Republican Town Committee to be brought forward? Okay.
And the town clerk already notified them.
Okay, very good. All right. Item number five, we have invitation to equal court of honor for Connor Fitzpatrick, Benjamin Nolick, and Connor O'Grady. And there's a ceremony of three scouts from Boy Scout 251. I'll read the letter. "These young men, by their own efforts, have achieved the highest rank in scouting. The event will be held on the first congressional, at the First Congressional Church, 7 Andover Street, at 11 o'clock on Saturday, June 28th. Should you or designee wish to attend, please respond, etc., etc. We, understanding your tremendous skill..." We, understanding your tremendous schedule commitments, whatnot. So the question of the board, are there anybody here that would be able to attend that, that June 28th event?
I'm out of town. Traveling.
I have another Georgetown event, unfortunately.
Okay.
I might be able to. Let me just double check.
All right, double check.
My wife doesn't have me.
Gary, any interest? Possibly?
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen, let me know, and I'll check my schedule as well. And we will absolutely have one or more of us there. I've done a lot of the Eagle Scout honors, which is fantastic. I love it. I'll apologize in advance if I do go and I get choked up, because I just love, I love the commitment that the, that the kids make and what they actually do with it all. So it's great stuff. Item number six, I thought maybe Carol was gonna be here for this, the request from the school facilities and grounds director for acquisition of the old Ford one, Ford one ton dump truck from the Highway Department. We have a letter from Mr. Anderson. The schools request in the acquisition of the Ford one-ton dump truck that will become available when the Highway receives their new dump truck. While the truck no longer fits the needs of a daily frontline piece for the Highway Department, the truck would be a great asset for the maintenance of athletic fields and grounds at the three schools. With addition of the truck to our fleet, we'd be able to do more for less, and we would not have to ask for help from other town departments as often. Nor will we be charged for delivery fees such as items as mulch and clay for baseball fields, et cetera. Respectfully submitted, Michael C. Anderson, Director of Facilities and Grounds at the, at the School Department. So Pete, do you want to come up and chat a little bit about this with us at all? Mr. Durkey is here from the Highway Department. I'll open it up to, to the board if you guys have questions that you want to talk to Pete or Mike or anybody about. I've had some discussions with both parties.
Mr. Chairman, just, just as a procedural issue, we could just take that vote to transfer it from one department to the other, Mike? Or do we have to do a disposition on...
I think, no, you would have to surplus it and then allow the school to have it.
How do we surplus it by a vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so it would be two votes. It would be a surplus vote and then a transfer vote?
Yes.
Okay.
We need to see the letter, Pete.
Is there a, is there a, is there a...
Based on what I talked to Mike about, the trade-in value was $5,000, right?
That's what Peter told me.
Is that? So Pete, tell us a little bit about what's going on.
It's a 2003 F-350 dump with a plow. It's got, currently it has 109,822 miles. It's time to replace on my end, because, you know, I use it every day.
That's right to the point.
Thank you. Do you have a point of view on surpleasing it to the school versus doing it on a trade-in? Do you have a point of view or a preference?
It doesn't matter to me.
Do you have a replacement?
Excuse me?
Do you have a replacement for this?
Not yet. It, it won't go to the school till I get a, the vehicle.
What's the timing on your vehicle?
Second or third week of July.
Okay.
And that's been voted by town meeting?
Yep.
Is that part of the CIP numbers? Or?
Yes.
Yeah, that was on the warrant, wasn't it?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if I might ask, Mike, Mike, is there an asset number or something for the vote? Do they have, do you have like any type of?
No, we don't.
Inventory number or something?
Identification system for any of our assets.
Really?
Are they gonna keep the Ford that they got from the light department, you know, so they'll have three, or just keep it down to two?
I think courses are gonna be drawing that one down through the square.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, there's some value to that, and if they're gonna get rid of it, I'd rather just trade it in toward the, the vehicle that I'm getting to, to, you know...
What, the old one?
The old, if they're not, if they're gonna get rid of it.
That truck they have?
The hillbilly truck?
Yeah, the steak truck. Yeah.
So we have to declare that as surplus first, or whatever the order is, but we'd have to declare that equipment as surplus. Or they would, rather. The school committee would, right?
I think so. Because it was already surplus by the light department.
Where's this going? We're getting a lot of use out of a surplus, out of these...
Peter, what does the maintenance record on this vehicle?
Since I've been here, the, we've been keeping records on what's been done to the vehicle. And I have listed, you know, the, the regular maintenance, you know, the oil changes and the, and things like that. But we did a transmission flush back in 10, and we did universal in brakes in '07. We also did brakes again in '12. So...
Have, have there been any major repairs, transmission or engine or?
Nope.
Anything big?
Nope.
Mr. Chairman, I, I can't see, I, I, we cannot do this tonight. We realize that, right? That if we surplus it, how is he gonna use it? So when you're ready to make the transfer, then that would be the time for us to surplus it, right? So from a procedural perspective, we can say, you know, when Pete's ready, we'll do it. But in the meantime, if we surplus it, he can't, he's not supposed to be using it.
Yeah, we're gonna have to wait.
We're gonna have to hold off. Right?
Technically, yes.
Yeah.
So Pete, if you were the schools, would you accept this? And the reason I ask is sometimes receiving equipment costs us more in the end than not.
I mean, I don't know what their plan is, how long they plan on keeping it. It's, it's definitely good for a couple, three years. You know, for around town, what they do, I would, you know, I don't see they need to put a plow on it and plow, but if they can, they, you know, they can, if they want to. But they don't need to. You know, we take care of all the plowing of the, the town buildings.
So from, from your perspective, it's, it makes sense for them to take this vehicle?
It, I, you know, it's definitely easier with it, something that dumps, you know. If they have to do a cleanup, they can throw everything in the back and go dump it. Instead of putting something in the back or putting it into their little Kubota tractor and then taking it up on the hill and dumping it out three ads at a time, or should I say, you know, six trash bags at a time, you know?
Well, the reason I ask is if we're giving a $5,000 asset that's gonna potentially cost us $10,000 a year, I just want to make, get a, make sure that that's not gonna happen.
Yep. Right now, it runs okay. I don't see any issues with the vehicle.
Gary?
They seem to have kept that truck from the electric light department running for several years.
Yep.
They seem to have the ability to do that. Whether they're still gonna need that, I think, is, is an excellent question. But I just wanted to make that statement. But, but do we, do we also need, you know, I, I take it Mike has gone through Carol and the school committee also with this? I mean, are they willing to accept another vehicle that may need, it's certainly gonna need a higher cost, with there's things on that that are gonna need a higher cost repair than that old stake bed truck?
Yep.
And what about the plow? Are you planning on keeping the plow, or does that go with the truck?
Nope, that goes with the truck.
So you would definitely lose some value there. I mean, that's, that's...
Well, the new truck that we're getting is gonna have a plow, so...
Yeah, but I mean, if you got the other one, I mean, that, that's, I'm thinking that might be half the value with that truck, at this point. I don't know.
Yep.
Is a trade-in for the vehicle is, was there a trade-in?
I, I wasn't planning on trading it in, because I, you know, I heard right from the get-go that the school wanted it, but I can, they'll definitely take it in trade.
Can you just let us know what that number is? Because...
I would say it's probably close to the 5,000 mark.
That'd be great, just verify that, so we're just not...
Yeah, I called up and asked, so...
All right, then that's clear.
So would the school committee need to accept it?
I don't know about the committee, but I know the superintendent definitely wants...
She's been advocating for it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. What is your point of view on this whole topic, Mike? I'd like that, that board to hear it.
Well, I'm, I think the, any vehicles we end up, I think they should all be traded in. Particularly with the value such as this. It lowers our acquisition costs. When I first came here, almost every department had a police cruiser, and that was the, not a very smart thing to do. Because we just pass, you know, the police cruisers above everything are just run into the ground. But now the, we don't do that anymore. They trade them in, and, and they get a high trade-in value. You know, $2,000, $3,000, $4,000. And I think that's what we should strive to do with all our vehicles. Trade them in before they cost us a lot of money in repairs and have a higher, you know, higher than scrap value. Let's put it that way. You know, they could get lucky and, you know, they could have a couple, three years of, you know, maintenance-free usage out of it. But, you know, the engine could blow next, you know, first storm they plow in, or the transmission could go. When I've, in, in other towns where I've, I've worked, if we passed a vehicle down, it had a three-figure limit for a repair. If you had to spend more than $1,000 to repair it, it, it's scrap. We can't do that in this instance. But I, I just find, you know, when it reaches its useful life for a department, it's time to trade it in.
What, what would a guestimate cost for replacement of a new vehicle for this school be on a monthly note? $300, $400 for that vehicle?
The, like an F-350?
Is that what it is?
That's what we're, we're getting rid of.
This is an F-350 dump?
Yep.
Okay. What kind of number would that be through municipal buy?
$100 bucks a month. But does, does the school really need an F-350?
I don't know.
I mean, if, if they were going to the CIP, I don't think the CIP, and I'm on the CIP, but I don't get to vote, I would never, I, I, they, they really would never be able to convince me that they need an F-350.
Yeah, I mean, they could easily pick up a dump trailer, too, you know, for a regular pickup. You know?
They just received a new vehicle.
Yep.
Last year.
A 150 dump?
No.
I mean, 150 pickup?
I think it's an F-250 pickup.
250 pickup, okay.
Four-wheel drive, it's a plow.
Excuse me, I have a chest cold, guys. That's why I'm choking here tonight.
They, they got that in March.
So we've got, go ahead, Gary, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, I, I see a lot to what Mike is saying. And I, I think at some point down the road, we need to look into a whole town-wide fleet sort of policy. But what are you seeing for life on that? What was the year of that truck again?
2003.
So you're getting 10 years out of it. Yeah, so that's, and you've just got the one that size and then some...
No, we have two that size. Well, one's a 350, one's a 550, but they're basically the same size.
So I guess my thought was, if, if you're, let's say you're turning over a truck every five years possibly, I don't know. Do you have a rotation plan? Because, because I can't see with the mileage that's on that, that they're possibly fitting another department that's not putting a lot of miles on it, such as a school department, for the use that they're saying. You may want to say, don't give them the plow, because as, as Mike fears, they may go out there and, and, you know, blow it up, plowing, if, if they're not experienced on how to operate that type of thing. But if, if you are rotating a truck, it might be a, a way that it can rotate down to them.
You know, I just, this, this vehicle with insurance and maintenance for the year is gonna be about, I would suspect, $7,000, $10,000, somewhere between $7,000 and $10,000 to maintain and operate, assuming there's no big problems with it, with it. $5,000, the value of it, insurance is another $5,000.
I checked that today, it's $770.
Pretty close. And then there are ongoing regular maintenance and some minor repairs, right? So let's say it's past $10,000. I guess the question is, if it's a $10,000 value, including the cost of the vehicle, which is worth five, and the $5,000 on top of the whatever, what are, what are they doing? What's the benefit they're gonna get out of this? I mean, is it gonna save them $1,000 a year for a $10,000 piece of equipment? Or is it more than that? And that's what I, what I really want to understand as well. And it could be much more, it would be great. And if they say, listen, you know, it could save us $30,000 a year if we get it, then that might change the, I think, our attitude a little bit.
What would a replacement cost be roughly? Top line number, you think, for one of those?
Probably in the 50s. The one we're, we're getting is a larger one-ton, and it's $64,000.
Okay. What about an F-150?
They have, they have an F-250 right now, a pickup, so I don't know how much they paid for that.
Okay. All right. Did anyone else have thoughts?
If you look at his, Mike's letter, it says, with the addition of the truck to our fleet, we'd be able to do more for less, as we would not have to ask for help from other town departments, which tells me that other town departments are doing it free, right? You're helping them out if they need it.
The school has a hard time, you know, paying for things, so, you know, other departments pay. They always try to, you know, like, for instance, Friday, we'll be planting a couple of trees in front of Pearlie. So...
Yeah, I mean, because he, Mike says, it's delivery fees for stuff like mulch and clay for the baseball fields. I mean, by the time you factor in the maintenance, the gas, and the person to drive it, it's probably, you know, the savings, where's the savings?
And that's, that's all I know. And that's not, I mean, we're not putting you on the spot. I just want to, if Mike can help us out, make a good business case for this, that will help us make a decision. Can we ask Mike, Mike Anderson and/or?
Can you run some numbers and, you know, and analysis? The other thing, can you also just put a note, if we're, we don't have assets catalogued in this town, we should probably work on that project?
Well, we have an inventory system.
We have, we have an inventory.
Must be a number assigned to that piece of equipment, no?
We have in the fleet schedule. There is, there's a fleet schedule with my, that has numbers.
Some identifier, right?
So... Well, we identify them through the plate number.
Okay.
Okay, something.
Yeah.
VIN number, a plate number?
But are, are computers, are we leasing the computers? We're leasing all our computers and everything, right? Three-year lease?
That's right.
So we don't have them as an asset, because they're gonna, they're gonna get capitalized and rolled out every three years through our vendor?
Correct.
Okay. So yeah, if there was issues there, we should certainly look at, you know, some type of thing. So you'll do an analysis?
We have, we have all our rolling stock inventories and, for insurance purposes.
And the accountant's told us that the last time they were here, too.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's, yeah, I mean, there's probably some...
There has to be a number somewhere.
Some extra work that needs to be done on that one, you know? So what, if, you'll do an analysis of cost-benefit for us?
Well, I think, Mike, weren't you talking about Mike Anderson or me?
Yeah, yeah.
It's up to Mike Anderson.
Yeah, Mike and Carol can put something.
All right, well, they, they, yeah, have them please do that for us. The other thought is, so next time, whenever you're, you get your truck, bring it forward, and we can, you know, figure out what we're gonna do on it.
Well, it would be nice to know before I got the truck, because if I'm gonna trade it in...
Oh, no, that's true.
They're probably not gonna tell me to hold on to the vehicle for a few weeks.
All right, so gentlemen, here's, here's what we have for us. We either surplus the truck and vote on the transfer tonight.
Can't do it.
We could do it at that 23rd.
No, but we could add a date, we could put a date in for the surplus.
Still do it at the 23rd meeting after you hear back from Mike Anderson.
Well, we, we, do you have to declare it surplus to trade it in, or you don't do that, right?
No, you wouldn't.
So we wouldn't declare a surplus if we decide we're gonna trade it in, so we should just hold off to the 23rd.
Okay. So...
I'd have to use your truck if we declared that surplus tonight. I'd have to take yours.
Okay, so we'll put that on the 23rd agenda. Just from a discussion point of view, from my point of view, I, I've heard both sides of the story. You know, I've heard Mike's, I've heard Pete's, and I've heard the schools. I haven't seen the cost-benefit analysis. Upon seeing that, that'll help us be a little bit more informed. One of the things I discussed with Mike is, is, you know, for departments to start looking forward and doing a three-to-five-year capital improvement plan. And he's gonna be working on that and discussing it with the major departments here in town. I've asked him to do that. And the timeline is, we're hoping sometime this fall, right, Mike, that we might get that information back from them. So I've tasked Mike with that. The other thing is, if we do surpluses and it goes to the school, the life on this is gonna be a year and a half to three years, probably at best. So my request, this is just coming from me, and it's up to the board to discuss it and talk about it once, if we get to vote next time, is that my request is, if we do surpluses, that the school put it within their maintenance budget to cover the cost of any future and all future vehicles in the school department. It is not a CIP item. I don't think it's a CIP item. I don't think it's appropriate for it. They have a maintenance budget. They should be funding it directly out of their maintenance budget. That is personally where I'm coming from. I don't know how you guys feel, but I will definitely be advocating for that side of the fence if and when we... That is personally where I'm coming from, I don't know how you guys feel, but I will definitely be advocating for that side of the fence if and when we surplus this thing. Just so you know.
Are they making a budget to maintain it or to buy future vehicles?
Maintain it and operate it, insure it a little bit, although we pick it up for insurance, right, from the town. But to actually pay the note and, and to maintain it.
Is that how we do other vehicles? Don't we use CIP for all the other departments and all those? Which ones don't we do?
We don't do it with the police.
Okay.
That's an operating budget.
Right.
Item.
So I'm just telling you guys, that's where my point of view is, and I'm staying on that point of view.
So I think we just need a policy on that, because it seems like we're singling them out versus how we do the others. So the police vehicles are a little different scenario, I think, but we just, I think we should have a policy on that, so they should understand that, because.
Yeah, police vehicles don't. Don't have a five-year life exist, uh, existence.
They're, they're on a three-year cycle.
They're like bullets.
No, but, yeah.
You have to have them to be a police department.
But they're also on the operational budget, because they're leased, right?
So I think we owe it to school to explain why they'd be being treated than the rest of the departments, if everyone else, other than the police, does it off CIP.
Uh, well, CIP's not out of the water, or the electric department, water department don't do it out of CIP.
That, those are really separate budgets, right, those are.
Oh, those are enterprise funds, but.
Yeah, that's, I guess in terms of the ones that are under our budget, the original town budget, I just, my only opinion is, is they'd, if I'm there, I'd say, why am I different than any other department? That'd be the question, is to.
Well, we could probably say that about negotiations for contracts too, then.
For?
Um, how much the janitor's getting for a raise this year, and how much are the highway department getting for a raise?
No, I, I don't think, capital, capital investments aren't contract negotiations, those are different to me.
But, you know, anytime we talk about negotiations and we bring up the school, that, that's separate.
It's driven by external forces that we don't have control over, or do they? They have no control over it either. Right, I mean, is what it is, so.
I would disagree with that, they have control in their negotiations.
We're digressing there, but.
You're gonna come up with that policy, it seems very arbitrary, Mr. Chairman, and it doesn't seem to have any correspondence with how we treat the rest of the.
No, I, I, so, you know, that.
They bought their last truck with, with, you know, funds of their own money?
Correct, and they, they're doing that already, so I, I don't see any issue with it.
I agree with that, I'm just saying excluding them from the CIP funds, I think they should have a right to petition.
No, they certainly can petition the CIP, I'm just saying, if we're gonna do this, and we're gonna surplus it and give it to them, my point of view is what I stated, so, that's all I'm saying. And you guys can agree or disagree, but that would be something that I would bring up and make a condition of this surplus transfer.
You, you said a lot, I'm gonna have to wait and watch it on YouTube and see what you said again, so I can pay.
To, to quickly summarize, Gary, I was saying, if we surplus this and we give it to them, the life is probably gonna be a year and a half to three years at best. And I would expect them fully to fund their own future vehicles out of their maintenance budget, to pay for the note. And ma- and pay for maintenance.
Future vehicles.
After this one disappears, i.e. dies or whatever, you know what I mean? Because they currently have vehicles that they've already done in there, so I would expect that to be a part of an operational budget.
If I can make a comment, I.
I'm not sure.
What I envision here is that we're adding more to the fixed costs by surplusing this and giving it to the schools.
Yep.
Uh, so I tend to agree with Mike, because it's gonna impact their future budget, because in the next li- next budget, they're gonna have to factor in insurance.
Well, not insurance, 'cause the town's covering it, but.
They're gonna have to fact, factor, let's put it this way, operating costs for that vehicle, it just adds another piece of fixed costs to the budget.
But the number may well be less than if they were writing a note on a vehicle.
That's the thing, we don't know if they're gonna re- retire or trade in the other vehicle, that's a piece of information we don't have yet.
Yeah, so we need to really talk to them, I mean, if they're talking about retiring a vehicle and replacing that with this. Well, then I'm fine with it, I just don't wanna keep adding and adding and adding. And it carries forward and becomes a structural issue. Yeah, we don't need structural issues going forward.
Right, but not, what I'm saying is.
Any department, really.
Likelihood of the maintenance being more than a new vehicle note is probably less than a new note on a new vehicle. You know, I, I don't know, but that's why I say we need a basic cost benefit analysis.
And we should put something in a, in some type of policy that deals with residual value. If the residual value was more than X, it gets traded, and it, it towards the cost of something else. If it's under, like Mike said, a threshold, and it's basically scrap, we use it till it dies. But if we can get value for it over a certain amount, then it should be traded in.
Okay, any further discussion? Thank you, gentlemen, Mike, anything, no?
No, I'm good.
All right, item number seven, uh, notice of, uh, two thousand and fourteen historic preservation award from the state to Edward S. Jarden.
Is there anything anymore for Peter?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Pete, you're right, we have the, the, I'm sorry, um, the, uh, rehabilitation of Elm Street Engineering Contract. For approval, while you're here, you're right, thank you.
Did you look at the new contract? And I don't know if it was in color, but the, um, the red shows the changes that were made.
I don't like that, I mean.
You know, we have a black and white version, so.
Got a clean copy.
One of, um, one of the cons- one of the things that, uh, you and Mr. Hoover, I think, talked about. Was that he had contacted me this afternoon and, and had asked to include in our language, including but not limited to trees over six. Including, uh, spots, spotscape and stone walls and fences on that, the scope of the twenty-five-foot area.
Yep.
Which you thought.
How many foot?
Well, within the scope of, of what they were, uh, what they have in here, because he's just concerned that, that being, and I'm just. Explaining his point of view, that, as he talked to me about it today, was that, um, Elm Street being one of the more oldest or most historic. Street potentially in town, there's a lot of, um, stone walls, um, and older trees. That when they do the, the cut, basically the curb cut, that if they're, if they're not putting the trees on the plan. And the stone walls on the plan, it could potentially impede with, um, the contract, so to speak, and actually add maybe. Some more costs to the contract from the con- from the engineering point of view, if it's not included. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and kinda get your point of view on it, and, um, he's just wants to avoid when they curb cut. That they put the, the bigger trees on the plan, so that they're not getting into the root cuts and everything like that.
Yeah, and, and I talked to him about the plan that we had for, um, around the library area, and that showed all the trees within the curb cut. And it showed the caliper and.
And he's saying, given this language in, it's very nebulous, and it doesn't, doesn't mention that, so it could very easily be overlooked, and he's trying to avoid that. So, uh, I don't know if you guys or Mike, you have a point of view on it, if we were to put that language in there.
What are you talking about?
No, I don't have a.
Page two, um, under field survey.
And are we re- re- revising, uh, one of the, um, subsections here, or are we adding a sub- a section, subsection?
It would be in field survey A.
Yes.
That he's asking to have added, included but not limited to trees over six feet, including spot grade.
No, I think it's six-inch caliber, not six feet, that would be.
I'm sorry, six inches.
That would be every tree out there.
Yeah, sorry, six inches.
You wouldn't be able to see the plan.
No, sorry, I'm sorry, six inches. But other than that, Mike, were there any concerns in the contract or any others?
Not from legal.
Okay, anything from you?
No.
Okay, Pete, anything from you?
No, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
You know, we talked about the new type of drainage system out there, instead of having, um, the rain gardens, it would be a closed system. There would be some large, uh, collection areas to take care of the, uh, the, the water, to try to, you know, clean the water a little bit before it went anywhere. So, you know.
And that's in the existing infrastructure we have?
No, that would be added.
That would be added.
Yep.
What, what are you looking at there?
Um, page five.
F. Improvements, F one? Oh, I'm sorry, it would be F two, right?
What page you want?
I'm on, uh, page five, F, it's F, item F, number one, and number two, drainage, number two is drainage improvements. They'll be limited to installing deep sump catch basins where new drainage structures are required.
Yes.
Reusing existing.
No, they won't be reusing any.
So would we strike that?
Well, the only ones that they may reuse is the ones that the school is putting in on that road going up the hill, that's the only ones they may reuse. But any other structure in the roadway will be replaced.
So we should probably strike that language from the contract.
Well, I know it's gonna be, you know, this is only, you know, to get us in the door, and then we're gonna have a, you know, we'll go out and walk the site, and I'll tell them that all the structures get replaced. All the pipe gets replaced.
So is that gonna add on cost to the engineer design or anything?
No.
Because as it's written right now, it says they're reusing existing structures that'll be retained within the right of way. I'm looking at F two.
There is a disclaimer, though, are replacing them when required.
Yes.
Due to outdated materials or structural failure. So you're gonna determine structural.
You know, from what I learned at the, the library, there was two or three structures that we're, we were gonna keep, and we ended up just getting rid of them and putting new ones in. You know.
Without issue?
No, it's, it's just an add-on in, at the end of the project with the, um, the person doing the work. It's not something that the engineer has to come up with, you know, new figures or anything like that, we just add a new structure in.
Okay.
So.
So you're, so you're comfortable with this?
But in the, in this design, they'll have, any structure you see out there, there'll be, they may re- um, remove structures that aren't needed out there. You know, I'm looking at Elm Street, you know, from, coming off East Main Street, and there's three structures close together, we probably only need two out there. So we don't need that third one.
Okay.
'Cause the way we're gonna regrade the road, we're gonna make the water go to these two structures and not need a third.
Okay. And then, back up a little bit, so when we were on the school builder committee, we were talking about the Elm Street tie-in. Currently, they're in a closed system.
They're in a.
Until they tie into your system.
Yes.
The original thought was they were gonna do rain gardens, not a closed system, off that piece right there, or was that gonna be the Elm Street?
Is not even gonna be in working, it's not even gonna work until we, you know, take off the grates off the top.
Until we cap, pop the caps and everything, yeah, okay.
And it's, it's gonna be.
But it is a closed system tying into this closed system.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's what I just wanna clarify that, so you're comfortable with that? The art guys, art OPM, and everybody seemed like they get it, based, I'm not an engineer or any of that, so the tie-in and everything, we can make that happen. Without having to do a whole bunch of digging and ruin a whole bunch of new pavement.
Well, they'll, they'll put a pipe right out to Elm Street, and that will be where we tie into.
Okay, and it'll disrupt minimally the new pavement?
It won't, we won't touch the new pavement, it will be outside the new pavement zone.
Okay, great, that's.
I'll make sure of that when they start doing their work up there.
So let me ask you then, adding this, this language that Mr. Hoover is concerned about, was that language basically in the, the, the winter street? Where they put those trees on the plan?
I mean, I, I talked to him earlier about this, you know, there's fencing, there's trees, there's.
Stone wall.
Yep, it's all on the design around there, when they go around and do their design, they're, you know, taking points from everything, measuring the trees.
Okay, is that what they're planning on doing here as well?
Yes.
So.
I mean, it's not that it's not in here, it's just that it's not, you know, spelled out black and white, it's, you know, the gray area, but that's how it was done on that. Area around the, where, around the, uh, library.
Okay, so Mike, let me ask you this, if we were to add that language, how long of a, would that delay our process? A few days, or not necessarily?
Well, we, we can put them, you, you can make the approval subject to the language.
Okay, but you're looking to get this contract ASAP, 'cause we're running a little bit behind time-wise, based on what we were talking about on the school building committee.
I mean, I don't see it to a big deal, I could talk to the engineer tomorrow, um, get something over to Mike, if you sign something tonight. And then we, you know, and you could, you know, put on.
It is an addendum?
Yep.
Is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, I have to, I would suppose that if we vote on this with the amended language, include that in, uh, the, uh, that text into the actual contract. And I have us sign it, submit it to legal, and if they're comfortable.
It, it's part of a scope, so legal won't make an opinion on it one way or the other.
So we just have the engineer put it in there, yep.
So.
It's basically take out one page and.
Well, verbally, uh, approve it with that language in it.
Okay.
And then.
And then the engineer can redraft the contract?
Well, we'll submit the change to them that we wanna see on the contract.
We'll put, I can put that language in, and then we'll send it back to the.
Okay, so it's basically an addendum going on the.
No, it, it would be, we change the body of the contract.
Okay, all right, and you can do that and, okay, all right. Thoughts, questions, gentlemen?
I'd love to go first.
What's that?
I said I'd love to go first on this one, we, we've had this in front of us. I know how we're gonna pay for this, Peter's planning on paying for this out of chapter ninety, but again, I don't know how we intend to pay for the work. And it may sound like a broken record or whatever, but I went through this with, at the, um, finance and advisory board. And the chairperson wanted to, you know, it said a selectman, we gotta get going on this, we gotta get this done. And I asked them, where are you getting the money? Oh, we got approved at the town meeting, they also thought that it got approved, and we're just gonna add it on to the school. So I don't believe we've got any idea right now at this point, other than the chairperson's comment that night was, well, we'll go back to the voters. And tell them we need more money. So I fail to see where you're gonna get the one point eight to who knows how much to pay for this project. We knew that going in. We knew that going in.
We had talked about, we had, well, I, I know we had talked about some free cash.
Go look at the tape, go look at the tape.
I know we had talked about there, maybe, we're probably gonna have to do a, 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 an amalgamation of free cash, you know? A number of, a number of options to, to do it, is, it was not on the warrant for town meeting, correct?
It was on, it was. It was, it was on the fall town meeting, same meeting that we approved the, uh, school.
But there was no funding mechanism in it at that point.
It was a, it was.
It's a bond.
Gonna bond it, but it was not dead excluded.
Okay.
But many still thought at the time it was, and even, like I say, in, it was February, March, probably. When the finance and advisory committee was still sitting there thinking that this project was dead excluded with the school, so, you know.
So let's assume it is for a second, we still have gonna be using funds that are gonna be part of a debt exclusion. So what's the difference between putting it on the school debt exclusion or its.
You can't.
Which we can't, but technically we can't, but we could've, and it, and if they thought, and if everyone agreed to what you're saying, that they thought it was part of the debt exclusion. With the school, then that money's committed, so we're just saying, it can't be part of the school, but we're gonna have its own debt exclusion.
What I'm saying, Phil, is knowing going forward that we've got no mechanism to fund this bond, that it was very much into this year's budgeting process. Okay, so you're spending a lot of money to do a project that you don't know yet how you're gonna pay for it. I mean, they should've been going over that and working some figures up, rather, they, like I told you, the answer was, we'll go back to the people and tell them we need more money.
I don't think we.
It may have been, it may, it may not have been exactly a quote like that, but it was to that effect.
I think that we all looked and said, we will deter, I mean, I know when I voted on this, it was, let's see, you know, we, we're gonna purposely not put a funding. Mechanism in it to see if we have the funds to pay for it out of free cash or other funds, and if we can't, or, or if there's a difference, we would bond the difference. That was the conversation, and with the, the, the expenses that we put this past year, and all the. Warrant articles, we obviously don't have any free cash to, to address that, so, you know, we still have to come up with a funding mechanism. And our expectation is that we would have some free cash to apply to it, and that, I don't see that happening.
If you remember correctly, and you can go back and look at the video of meetings that we had a while back when this first came up. And we said, we didn't know how we were gonna fund it, we were gonna look at safe routes to school, I mean, let's, let's stop refreshing our memory, guys. Okay, we were never part of the school, uh, the only part of the school was, there was about, I wanna say, two hundred thousand dollars to do the improvements. At the beginning of the street, at the Elm Street, where the school starts, and that's most likely, I, I wanna say two hundred, that sticks in my mind, but it may be a little bit more.
Three.
Three.
Yeah, it was three.
Three seventy-five, like, like, three, three seventy-five, so we knew that Elm Street needs to be redone as, as a result of the whole project. Um, we had, we had said, we don't know where we're gonna get the money, we still don't know where we're gonna get the money. Um, but we appropriated, and again, if you, I think if you go look at town meeting, I got up and said that, I said, look, this is only to get the engineering study. We still don't know where we're gonna get the money to, to actually do the project, but, I mean, I, for me, we should spend the money to find out how.
But, I mean, I, for me, we should spend the money to find out how much it's gonna cost. And then, you know, and and in the meantime, work towards figuring out where we're gonna get the money to do it.
I I think we need to get the minutes of town meeting because I was on the understanding that they voted to 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 do the work on Elm Street, the one point eight million dollars.
I believe you're right. We didn't do it, we didn't find, we didn't identify a source.
Exactly. So I mean, the the one point eight is out there. You know, we don't need to do a plan to find out how much it's gonna cost. I already have an estimate of how much it's gonna cost.
But we weren't really co- totally comfortable with that at one point, because the numbers were kinda floating around and.
I mean, that's the number I've had from the get-go, is the one point eight million.
And I agree, and and see, to to that point.
I mean, Phil talked about, you know, when I said I was gonna use chapter ninety money to pay for engineering, he said, you know, maybe we should look into another avenue of paying for the 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 funding for the uh, design. You know, one thing that we could do that may save us money is the library project. Um, we put that out the bid and we paid for all the materials, basically. And um, we had to have saved at the um, contractor that's doing the work out around Library Square. He he thinks that we've s- we saved between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars on doing it the way we did, buying the materials. Instead of them buying the structures and marking everything up, we purchased all the materials. We did the paving, cause we we get a much better rate. I told him how much I pay for paving. He pays, you know, a, you know, like thirty dollars more than I pay for paving, and he would mark that up. So, you know, we save money that way.
And we made a commitment to the people, to the residents on Elm Street, that this project was gonna be done. If I remember correctly.
Right.
As part of the whole school project. And that that Elm Street would have to be redone once the school was pretty much online.
And I'm hearing the school's way ahead of schedule.
Right.
So.
So if we did bond this, just rough numbers, are we looking at about a hundred thousand dollars a year for a payment? If we did, I don't know how many years you'd do it over, but.
Uh, we'd we'd have two hundred, about two hundred thousand dollars, it, no, it's about three hundred thousand a year.
A year.
It it would be.
How many years is that over? Ten?
Um.
No, it can't be ten. That'd be, is it one point eight million? Is that that?
Yeah. We would, we would. You have a, um, if it's, if it was ten years, you'd have one point, uh, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in principal due, and then probably another um, hundred thousand in in interest. I I had the numbers, I don't have them with me tonight. Hundred eighty-seven thousand sticks in my head.
Yes.
Actually.
Yeah, cause it's, that's a lot of interest.
So that, that's.
Hundred eighty-seven.
And I, and I do remember the conversation, whereas if we put it out to bond, we could still use free cash to pay the bond as well if we found that we had available.
Problem with that is, uh, that's only good for one year's payment, you know, no one, if the future holds for that.
Oh, of course, but I mean, that doesn't.
We were having with that safe routes to school and those types of bread, one of them we were looking for. Because that was part of the discussion.
Yeah, I talked to Safe Roots to School again when we, when I came to a meeting, um, I wanna say back in January, and uh, it it seems to me that if we go with Safe Roots to School, it'll be like a five or six year process.
We just got a letter from from the DOT inviting the school district to join, not join, but to start the process of studying, you know, basically doing a needs assessment before they even, yeah, and then they're saying there is engineering money after that process. But it's a community process and it's a school process that has to occur. And that process is probably at least a school year long. And it's federal money funneled through the state, so it 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 takes a while. They, part of the flyer explained how many, they were touting the program and they had like twenty programs um, in the last twenty years, so. And here's the letter here.
One thing the schools have to be on board with is they have to join Safe Roots to School. They have to give some education about, you know, riding your bike to school, walking to school, and so they have to take part in this. And when I first talked to Carol about this, you know, you needed to be on board for a year before you could even talk to them about engineering. And when it came time, like I talked to her, gave her the information, the contact information, everything like that, when it was time to go and talk to them about engineering, they said, jeez Pete, nobody's called me, so. You know, so that was a year, and then last year she joined up. So the first year you can get maybe a grant for around six thousand dollars, which may pay for, you know, the crossing lights outside the school zone. Um, to get, you know, what you grant, and then I I know I talked to him after the meeting in January and th- they don't give a lot of money for engineering. The grants aren't, you know, huge money like one point eight million dollars. We need one point eight. That there talks about, you know, three to five hundred thousand.
Peter, what's critical path here? What do we need to have done? When do they need to break ground to have this done by when the school opens?
Well, I I'm hearing the school's opening in December.
December two thousand fifteen?
Um, fourteen.
Fourteen.
I'm hearing they're they're ahead of schedule.
Not fourteen, it'd be fifteen.
Fourteen, you mean, this coming December?
This coming December.
In eight months.
Because it's supposed to open a a year, it's supposed to be ready a year from this month.
Right.
June.
Right.
And they're ahead of schedule, so.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair. I'll I'll calm down a little bit. This this project gets moved outside of. Maybe we need to meet with finance and advisory again or something and going forward, you know. I I don't wanna go into this and then surprise them saying, well, gee, we never having them turn around saying to us as a board of selectmen, well, how did you plan on paying for it? That's all I'm asking. Let's get a plan on how we're gonna budget this and pay for it for the town. That's what I'd like to see going forward. I'm not saying I don't wanna see the project happen. I wanna know how we're gonna, how we're gonna pay for it.
Talk to FinCom about that for an agenda meeting for them, uh, agenda item?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's the longest we could practically bond this thing, matching it up to useful life?
You know. Twenty, thirty years.
I'd match it up to the school would be my suggestion, same, let it run the same if we were, if that was the avenue to bond this.
Twenty-five for the school?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Right. And the only reason I say that is that that does make it more reasonable to do out of budget.
Out of budget, correct?
Cause it wouldn't be free cash per se, but you'd probably budget it, you know, so every year, so.
Unless you had a bulk of free cash, when the bill was due to buy it down and then bond the rest.
Right.
But I don't think we're in that position though.
I, and that's, I think, I mean, I
That was the point.
Clear as well, that's what's the plan in my mind.
And Safe Roots to School, we would bond maybe half of it.
That's right. Well, I, you made it clear the last time, six months ago, when you came in front of us that we missed.
No, when we first tied, I'm just saying, when we first tied.
That's, in my eyes, that's been a no, no, no non-starter since this project really started. Outside of the first few discussions and then the, a year ago you came and said it's not gonna happen, so. I I don't, I I don't discount that, so.
All right, any further discussion?
Will you um, reread the additional language that you wanna put on?
Yeah, so I I would entertain a, um, I would entertain a motion to accept the agreement for professional engineering services between the Georgia Town, Ju- Town of Georgetown, Massachusetts and Bayside Engineering, Inc. for professional engineering services for rehabilitation of Elm Elm Street. With the addition on two A of that scope to include, but not limited to tree, trees over six inches, including spot grade, stone walls and fences.
I mean, it's already in there for six inches. But it it's, in in the copy I have, it already shows six inches.
On two A? Don't see anything about trees.
Somewhere, would it be under historic?
Uh, maybe it is, I don't, well, I don't know if it's historic. Let me see.
It's not trees of six inches, it's trees.
Six inch caliper.
Caliper, six inch caliper or greater.
Trees are pretty small.
No, six inch caliper, I'm sorry, yes, that would be diameter, yeah, sorry.
Six inch, what are they called, calipers, is that what they're called?
Six inch caliper or larger. I'm sorry, the twenty.
No, you know what, it's it's in the the notes that I got from Rob, so it 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 isn't in here.
Yeah, so it would say.
Second.
Okay, so I just wanna add the word caliper. So including but not limited to trees over six inch caliper, including spot grade stone walls and fences.
Dave, uh, move it forward, I second it.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained.
Wasn't fully clear on the motion. The motion was to add.
The motion was to accept this as, as we have with the, I'm sorry, to accept this contract with the addition of the six inch caliper, spot grade.
Forward, we weren't accepting it. I thought you were just adding the language, cause it sounds like the motion now is accepting the contract with that wording. That's what you're doing?
Correct.
Yep.
Nay.
Okay. So do we have four to one?
Yep.
All right. Okay, Pete, anything else for you?
Thank you.
Sure, appreciate all your time. And by the way, thanks to your crew and everybody for getting all the pavement down in town.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Roads are looking a lot better. Um, we have, uh, do we have cultural council?
Yes, we do.
Excellent. Ladies, why don't you come up? We'll take care of you. Thank you for your patience. We have a request from the cultural council for a one-day liquor license for beer only at the American Legion Park concert on August tenth, two thousand and fourteen. And you ladies have quite a, uh, quite a setup here.
Yes, we do.
Um, you know, quite concerts here is going on, starting on, uh, the thirteenth of July, so July thirteenth, twentieth, twenty-seventh, three, eight, ten, seventeen, twenty-four. Concerts at the park on uh, Sundays at five to seven.
Yes.
So great job putting that together, that's awesome.
Come join us.
I will.
It's a fun time.
I get there, uh, I get there occasionally, but not, not that often.
Our regular.
I know, I know. Yeah. Usually doing kid things on a Sunday afternoon. But anyway, tell us what's going on.
I got yelled at for not going, but I, I, so this is a, uh, a request for August tenth?
Right.
That's the one I'll go.
For a twenty-four hour license.
That's the one I will go to then.
Yes, I would assume so.
Teasing.
So is this our usual where you do the your August event with beer?
Yes, it is.
Just a beer tasting or whatever?
We sell it.
You sell it.
We give, we sell the uh, bins for a certain amount of money. We can have the proceeds.
Okay. Everybody's tip certified for serving, whatnot, insurance is is in order and all that?
Insurance.
Okay, I did see our insurance certificate in here and all that.
Parents is already taking care of.
The motion to approve a one-day liquor license for beer only at the American Legion Park concert for the cultural council on August tenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thank you very much.
All right, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
Expect to see you on the tenth.
Ladies, you are in business. Have a great series, um, make sure you're publicizing it on TV and in the newspaper.
Oh, yeah.
You guys do a great job. Thank you for, uh, doing what you do.
Thank you very much.
All right, you have a great night.
You too.
What were you pointing?
I'm gonna put this on my Facebook even.
Yeah, I know, I'll get back, yeah.
Good for you.
Thanks, ladies.
Um, so I wanna go back to the number seven, Notice of Historic Preservation Award for, um, from the state to Ed Disjarden. And that is number seven. Let me find number seven here. Thank you. Uh, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, it's three pages long. Um, but the long and short of it is Secretary of the Commonwealth, William Galvin, Chairman of Mass Historical Commission announces the selection.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Ed, why don't you come on up here?
Is that, where is that?
No, it's not here.
Let's jump.
Let's go now.
Um.
Joe, you wanna accept on behalf of Ed? I see a lot of white hair back there.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe they was in the, in the group, yeah.
So announces the selection of Ed Edward Disjarden, um, of Georgetown, formerly of Raleigh, to receive a two thousand and fourteen Massachusetts Historical Commission Historic Preservation Award. Um, the Historical Commission, Mass Historical Commission's proud to recognize the remarkable accomplishments of this year's awardees. Says Secretary Galvin and Ed Disjarden has been active in preserving historic resources in the region, uh, wherever he goes, devotes himself to local preserv- preservation with extraordinary passion, and there is three pages of accolades, and we wanna recognize that and, um, say thank you, Ed, and, uh, appreciate all of your service and, uh, congratulations on that award.
Absolutely.
Do you gentlemen have anything else to throw in there? Any comments? No? Good. All right, he does deserve it. Why don't we, are are you here for the Byfield Parish? Is that what you gentlemen are here for?
Old Byfield Cemetery.
Yes, okay, why don't you gentlemen come up? So Byfield Parish Cemetery requests for graveyard maintenance funds. Mister Joseph to be present, item number twelve on our agenda.
Thank you very much. You all know Joe Knapp and Doug Jones.
We do. So why don't you gentlemen bring us up to speed on what's, what this is about and the request.
First of all, thank you for inviting us to come and, um.
A pleasure.
I like, I I could start off because it's obvious to me, and it's become obvious, since I've been the liaison for all the cemetery work going on in our town for many years now, that not many people know about the old Byfield Parish Church burial grounds. As our oldest historic cemetery in the town, seventeen oh-two. So we spent a lot of time and effort on Union Cemetery, but in effect, it didn't come along till seventeen thirty-one. Now that the the church itself inherited care of that cemetery, which no longer produces funds, of course. And when the parish system folded in eighteen thirty or some, something like that, Newbury said, okay, Byfield Parish, you can take over the whole cemetery. Basically, that's what happened. So, as long as I've been involved in it, uh, I went to, my job over the past several years is to get get all the cemeteries together, so we can make a database for the town. Web page, so they know anybody that wants to look up where anybody's buried in our town can do that and not bother the clerk. The clerk gets many calls, as I do, because she refers him to me for Union and someone else for the old Byfield and the church gets called. And so, the South Byfield Church Cemetery is also in Georgetown, and not many people realize that. It's called South Byfield, while Byfield was a parish, so. So my intent here was primarily to just make sure you're all up to speed as to why, where this request for funds for veterans' graves is coming from. This cemetery has probably the oldest veterans in our town buried there. And I was, I'm somewhat responsible for this, cause when I first started this liaison business, I asked the Byfield Parish people, were they getting funds for their veterans' graves? What funds? So, I told, told, uh, him that that you should request it, because it's something you have to request. So they did. Now, it unfortunately got confused between the old, the South Byfield Cemetery and the old Byfield Cemetery.
Yes.
But the the request for the old Byfield Cemetery through the Byfields, uh, church, Byfield Parish Church Incorporated, who runs that cemetery, because they had to inherit it because it came, would become abandoned like Union, when old South Church moved away. So, in, for over many years now, it's been largely cared for by Eagle Projects and everything else, but it is a tough, tough sell for the church to maintain it fully. So I suggested that they at least apply for this grant for the veterans' graves. And, uh, thence the problem came, cause where's the old Byfield Cemetery? What is it? We didn't even know we had it. That's the, it kind of the response that came back. So, given that, I mean, the the issue is basically how should, how, we have four thousand dollars and I don't know where that come from. Is that, whether it's a town funded or does the federal people contribute any of that? So it's all from the town. So if we're gonna fair, be fair, we should at least provide on a prorated basis or something, depending on the number of veterans' graves, the amount of money that goes to each cemetery in our town. It's one of the four legitimate cemeteries. Whether or not it is run by a church, it's just an incorporation, so just like the other Harmony gets their funds, they're a separate corporation. Now the Union Cemetery, I don't know where those funds go. Cause we were getting, we used to get a thousand dollars a year for Union. for the veterans' graves, now that the town has taken it over, where does that money go, do you know? Has Peter requested it, or?
I think that's-
Peter requested.
He did, okay. So that's good, he, he's getting at least his fair, his share for the veterans' graves.
I thought it was the selectman's expense account we got that.
So, so given that, I mean, the issue here is, is to figure out how to give Byfield Parish, the, the, the group that takes care, the cemetery fund, their fair share of, of this, uh, fund. Now, I can tell you that there's something like, in nineteen forty, the WPA, under the federal government, went around to all four cemeteries in our town and did a very detailed survey, which we have maps of, which located every veteran. Since then, there have been other burials which we have not necessarily recorded, so the numbers I have are based on nineteen forty. In nineteen forty, there was twenty-six veterans buried in that cemetery. In nineteen forty, in Union, for example, there's seventy-six, and in Harmony, there's one forty-seven, and what's the other one, is, uh, something in the hundred, something, in the hundreds for South Byfield. So, either we, we find a way to split up the money equally for the various cemeteries, or we find a way to put more funds in there, I don't know, but doesn't sound like we have a chance for the latter, based on what I've been hearing here tonight, so.
Sure, sure.
It would make sense to at least prorate it on number of graves-
Yes.
And let them get some funds.
How many veterans' graves are in this one?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Right, nineteen forty, now I know there's been burials there, uh, 'cause I talked to the, one of the custodians, who's, who did the history on it, in nineteen fif- up through nineteen fifty-six, there was still burials going on, so there could be like fifty or sixty in there now, just like the other cemeteries, we don't know the exact count, so until we get that, we should probably, you know, we're gonna prorate it, it should be on the basis of actual count today. But all I can quote is what the nineteen forty WPA survey from the federal government did.
Can you run those numbers again, Joe?
Pardon?
Say those numbers again.
Okay, it's, uh, okay, Harmony, one, one forty-seven, South Byfield, one fifteen, Union Cemetery, seventy-six, uh, Old Byfield, twenty-six, for a total of three hundred and sixty-four, as of nineteen forty.
Which Old Byfield is now Byfield Parish.
Right.
I mean, the cemetery hasn't changed a name, but it's-
Right, there've probably been fewer additions to the Old Byfield one, because it's-
You're talking about South Byfield Cemetery?
No, no, that's across street.
That's a totally different-
Everybody gets confused.
That's where it's confusion, yes, sir.
That's where the check was written by-
Right.
We have four cemeteries.
So the check was written- What's the exact name of this one?
It, according to the survey, it was called the Old Byfield Cemetery, the WPA gave it that name.
Okay.
And the one across the street is the South Byfield Cemetery.
Okay.
So the confusion is, Mr. Chairman, when they requested the check, they got it, for the other, they got the check, but it was written to the other-
That's correct, that's correct, yes, sir.
So, as I understand it, based on the site map, ninety-five percent or more of this is in Rowley, or, or Byfield, rather, not-
Yes, but it's totally owned under deed by the South, by the Byfield Parish Church.
Okay.
When, when the parish, the parish used to be-
Owned in fee?
Pardon?
Owned in fee?
Is that being owned by deed?
Yes.
Yes, it quotes a deed on the planning drawing I have, so I assume that if I looked up those deeds, I'd find out that the Byfield Parish Church is indeed the owner, 'cause it specifies on there that the owner of record, when that plan was made, was Byfield Parish Church.
And we're responsible for all the maintenance of it, cutting the grass and everything on it, so, we do all of that.
See, the other cemeteries have an advantage, South Byfield and Harmony are still making money. Union gets nothing, it's just a historic site, and the Old Byfield one, from the, from the viewpoint of the Historical Commission, is the most precious, one of the precious, most precious cemeteries in our town, because it has the oldest grave sites in it.
Right, I think from the Civil War, I believe, well, seventeen oh two, yes.
Well, there is some revolutionary-
Revolutionary War, yes, mhm.
Mister Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have a question for Mike, so in our operating budget, do we appropriate any money for cemetery maintenance?
No, cemetery maintenance, but for care of veterans' graves.
Okay, so we have a lot, and that's in the budget, has not been spent this year, this fiscal year?
No, um, I, I don't know what has been spent.
Well, this is June of thirteen, so that was last year, right, so, I don't know, that would be this year's budget, yeah, that's this year's budget.
Yes. Have to look at the expenses.
So, is this check, is this check right, or it was?
No, the check was made out to the South Byfield.
We're getting it back.
I've given the check to Mister Farrell already.
Okay, so that would put us whole at four thousand.
What we've done in the past, there's four thousand dollars, two thousand-
Two, one and one, right?
Went to, uh, Harmony.
Right.
One thousand went to Union, and one thousand went to South Byfield.
Right.
So if that amount is fixed, then the only way to, to resolve this issue is to apportion it differently.
Right, yeah, the four thousand-
There'd be a small amount to the-
The four thousand is the four thousand.
Yeah, and, and, and Joe, you know, is the first person that's come up and said, well, let's do it by veterans' graves. I don't know how this, uh, these, this money was divided up in the past.
What about, is it, was it done by-
Anybody can tell.
By square footage, no, it was acreage, but was it done by acreage, or?
I, I just-
Size?
Yeah, I just have a question, how are we allocating the funds now, just in, or just doing it on the property by dollar, right?
Yeah.
If we, if, is four, first of all, is four thousand dollars enough to maintain all these cemeteries for-
Not really, but-
For the graves, for the veterans' graves?
The veterans could probably answer that better.
I don't know that there's any oversight-
As you go.
Of the funds, to determine how-
Yep.
They're being used, are they being used just as general maintenance for the cemeteries, or are they being used specifically on the veterans' graves? We have no idea how that goes.
Who's the body that owns the account?
The town, selectmen, the, the finance committee.
I believe that the selectmen are responsible for veterans' graves.
And we, uh, so you, obviously, we get the invoices that come in on anything that's, that's been spent out of that account, right?
No, what we do is wait for them to request the money.
The trustees of the cemeteries.
We don't get a physical bill or a report of what's been done in order to gather that money.
No.
So up to this point, like, when I was involved with Union Cemetery, we requested a thousand dollars, 'cause we knew that's what they normally got.
Yep.
Harmony requested two, and Old Byfield, uh, South Byfield requested one, Data requested nothing, 'cause I didn't even know about it.
No.
So.
In my two thousand and thirteen letter dated May of two thousand and thirteen, which I believe I handed to you toward the end of May, it, I didn't ask for a specific amount, I just a equal share, is what I, if you'd like, I'll read it, but it said, "The Board of Trustees of Byfield Parish Church respectfully request an equal portion of the yearly disbursement, or any amount you feel appropriate of available funds for the maintenance and repair of veterans' headstones in our cemeteries." We also added, "It would also be lovely to erect a flagpole in the cemetery as well to honor our veterans." But, you know, I don't know if a sem- a flagpole, you know, constitutes the veterans' graves themselves, but it's, you know, for events like Memorial Day and Veterans' Day and so on, but, but we do have a number of, uh, of, uh, headstones that have been broken by the winter storms, the trees have fallen on them and, and broken some of the headstones. I can't give you a count right now of which ones, but, but there are a number there that-
Can CPC apply funds?
Yes, now, that's one of the things that Historical Commission has been planning to do-
Yep.
When funds become available again, because of the way they've been allocated, but-
Yeah, I, I, I know the answer to that, I just wanted to make sure I, I got this right, so, have we-
And we have the grant already to do the webpage, and that cemetery has everything put together for us already. All the names, Old By, uh, South Byfield is now in the process of doing what we're trying to do at Union.
Yep.
Re, getting the total inventory of people interred there, written down in a database, so, we need, we, we, we're gonna go for a grant to help the oldest of our historic cemeteries, because we think it should be preserved, and one of the things included the flagpole, similar to what is now gonna happen at Union, but that hasn't happened yet, that hasn't-
Yeah, so we're, we're kinda rubbing Peter to pay Paul a little bit here in some respects, so what's the impact of, of us taking a thousand bucks from somewhere else and spending it over there?
Well, if I may, Mister Chair? Hmm? It, it sounds like we need to find out just how much money got spent out of this account, I mean, we don't, when do we end our budget? I mean, is that the end of this fund?
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
So, if only two thousand, I, I believe at the last time Janet thought that only two thousand had been awarded to Harmony. I mean, I, I, I can tell you, some of you got to see this, okay, this gentleman and, and myself are the ones who typically cut the grass over there.
Yes.
We failed to get there so far this year, we're getting older, we, we, we're trying to recruit some younger help, so if anyone's listening who'd like to help cut grass, but, but right where these are, there are some large trees that are ready to fall down, and that's what we need, we wanna start, I, I, I feel that start getting, well, no, no, these, these need to be taken out.
Maybe even-
You're probably talking to Crane or something to take them out, because you're in there-
We're gonna lose a precious resource.
If one of them trees comes down, I mean, you can only imagine the history that it takes out with it.
Sure.
We've gotta start getting some money in an account to get in there and get some of these trees out. I realize only a small part of it is in Georgetown here, but there are one, two, three possibly, this, this veteran's grave is right on the line, and, um, we, we need to get, start with, start with some of them trees, I mean, it's not like we're gonna be buying lawnmower with that money, 'cause we, we've been, we do have an account, we've-
And you mow the entire property?
Yeah, we mow for those.
Yeah, Newbury is basically, they've closed their hands, anything to do with that cemetery, 'cause it's owned totally by the church. As part of the Byfield Parish, when it was dissolved, they became the owners of it. Well, I, I guess what I'm asking is, is if the money hasn't been spent, perhaps as a makeup, and the others haven't requested it, and then going forward, we could figure out what the disbursement needs to be made, and, and possibly, yeah, we need, we, maybe it needs, we need to follow up with some of these places and find out. I would kinda guess we have like six hundred wet veterans' graves right now in, in the whole town, something like that. I mean, there's, there's also, like, the first thing, when we were, we were in there, Doug and some scouts and, and I went in, and, and Joe is the one who found this map for us, which was excellent, we were for the first time able to go in a long time and mark those sites, but, um, you can see the X's that I, that, that was my putting it on there, all of these are missing markers. Uh, there's only one in Georgetown, but I probably, the first one we do is-
And that's what the funds are doing, is buying markers and lags and things like that.
Buying also to repair the stones, because, uh, as Gary has mentioned, the trees are very critical, about two or three winters ago, about a twenty foot section of a tree, and the rest of it, the other twenty foot is still standing dead, fell over and damaged three headstones. Now, I can't say they were all veterans, but, you know, they damaged-
Technically, the funds should be used just for the veterans' graves.
Oh, I understand, I understand that, I understand that, but the trees, if we don't do, you know, get some of the trees out, like Gary's, um, mentioning, that, you know, it may damage others also.
Okay.
It's turned, in, in the eyes of the commission, that cemetery is basically abandoned at this point, because the church, although God had tried to take care of it, it's not a group dedicated to it, so it's like Union where we, the town, had to take it over, otherwise we lose it as a historical asset.
So, Joe, you know, I, I, being on the, as an alternate on the Historic Commission, I haven't been able to make the last couple of meetings, but has this come up in the, the-
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, Joe is patiently waiting for me and other volunteers to, um, inventory the entire Union Cemetery, which, um, is on my docket to do this summer with my-
Yeah, it's only five hundred sites, right, five hundred plus?
That's gonna be a couple of weekends worth of work, not more. Um, but, uh, I wanna know what it's gonna take to get this cemetery, first of all, um, to a point where, uh, the cost of, of what really needs to be done there, to protect the cemetery, to protect the veterans' graves. Um, when we're talking to Crane and stuff like that, and taking down trees-
Yes.
We're probably talking some significant costs and-
Certainly.
And, um, if we can get that sooner than later, um, that can help us determine where we might be able to look at some, some funds, 'cause, uh, we're pretty tapped out, and so we need to get creative on how we might be able to help you guys.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and other members will too.
It's really two pieces, though, so I think there's a potential, uh, major, uh, help, that would be like a CPC fund, like a special project, but we have this four hundred, right now, four thousand dollars in maintenance funds, um, so it would seem to me that by veterans', uh, a grave is a reasonable allocation, and then potentially, what I would suggest is, rather than just a letter for the petition next year-
Yes, sir.
A statement of how the money was used, and that's what qualifies you for funds the next year.
Sure.
So that way-
All right.
We try and be fair about it, and I know, you know, I'm, it sounds reasonable, so, I don't know if that's reasonable in terms of the number of, of, of stones, uh, or veterans' graves, and then, again, when the letter comes in next year, we use the money for this, 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 doesn't have, I wouldn't expect to be like, make it onerous, but just simple list.
Sure.
And then, from there, once we have a way that we're dividing funds, we can then evaluate whether those funds need to change over time.
Sure, as long as it's equitable with all the other cemeteries too.
That's what I mean, well, meaning if you had to increase the total funds, or different counts came in on, on the, on the veterans' graves, as people did inventories, we'd have a, a process for doing it, and, um, and then, again, you know, really the CPC petition would be about if major significant work has to happen.
I, I have a question, a procedural question, how, how can we spend CPC funds on something the town doesn't own?
That, that's happens over and over, yes, now what we did with the Union Cemetery was, we took over the cemetery as a corp, we reestablished a corporation.
Who's we?
We, a bunch of volunteers, of which I became a corporate executive for once in my life, of the whole cemetery, but then we gave it to the town.
Right, well, that's my point.
So now, this cemetery probably is in the same category, it's a historic resource, it should be preserved for the town, and it probably should, the old, it should be, I think, whether or not, or the aid should be given to maintain it.
Yeah, well, I understand that, but my-
But by the way, it's still a significant-
CPC can be used-
Gives money to other non-
Other non, okay, well, that was my point.
Town entities.
The Historical Society is a good example.
Exactly.
Yeah, but we own those properties, so we do.
Oh, we do, but-
So, but I guess the question I still have is to understand is, and I'm not raising it as a barrier, I'm just confused.
Yeah, I'm just wondering actually, we're doing it.
Is, so, a significant amount of this property is in, is it Newbury, sorry, West Newbury?
Yeah.
West Newbury.
Yeah.
So, regardless of, regardless of ownership, it's still in, so if I own a house and half my land is in Newbury, West Newbury and half, or Rowley and half is in Georgetown, it doesn't change the fact that, that I probably have to pay taxes to Rowley, 'cause it's their land, and, so, but that, that is the case here, is that, I understand the stewardship of it and, and potentially in the deed, but two-thirds of this property is still West Newbury, and I think what Dave's point is-
Newbury.
Newbury, sorry.
Might take a request to just get it turned over to the town, right? Because the cemetery is owned totally by the church.
The church.
Right, which again, but still, it's not in-
Right.
It's not in Georgetown.
Yeah, you'd have to get it, get a boundary change.
So Dave just brings up a legitimate question for CPC funds by Georgetown taxpayers, if it were CPC for a major project, that seems to be an issue.
Is it, is it, is the, are the funds for the entity, who, the owner, like the Brocklebank Museum, which got lots of money, it's private and-
I think it's for the, the property that's in Georgetown, that's my point, it's the improvement of property.
Well, that's an issue that you guys would have to resolve, but, but I think the cemetery itself is a Georgetown asset.
Absolutely.
And if we wanna lose part of it, fine, but I would hope not, 'cause a lot of our history is there.
Well, no, I'm not proposing we lose it, but I just, it's a practical matter, that, you know, if there were
It's gotta be a leaver way.
Special regulations and easements, and half my personal property was on Rowley, Georgetown couldn't enforce those easements in Rowley and vice versa, so we, we have a practical issue of-
And Newbury does not have a CPA, so.
Right.
They, 'cause we asked them to help us, but they wouldn't, they just wouldn't do anything.
We have to basically, yes.
Right.
Well, I'm actually, I have a, a Veteran Services meeting tomorrow night, um, for the Eastern Essex Veterans Association, and their representative who's on the Veteran Services Board is gonna be there tomorrow night, so let me see if I can have a conversation with them as well.
I was saying, let's, let's piece this practically, let's, let's see if we can allocate the maintenance funds fairly.
Share the responsibility.
I mean, we're, we're-
Thing is, the maintenance of veterans' graves.
Right, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that has to be-
Right, absolutely.
It's owed.
I think Steve's suggestion was excellent, that-
Right now, it's about seven dollars a grave.
Right.
That's what it is.
Your suggestion to ask-
Yeah, just at the end.
Are you guys fixing it?
Well, let's take the four thousand dollars and divide it by six hundred, I mean, you got six hundred veterans' graves roughly, if we count all the new ones.
Mister Chair?
This only shows three fifty, but I know there's at least a hundred and fifty- This only shows three fifty, but I know there's at least a hundred and fifty more in all the cemeteries that have gone in there since World War Two ended.
Yeah.
And and, you know, the other wars, so.
My concern is that the clock is ticking here, and whatever's left in this account may go to free cash when the clock strikes July one. So you need to get the requests in or the bills or whatever, whatever mechanism there is to get this approved and done.
He has put the request in.
I've been, had the request in since last year.
Okay, so.
But without specifics, they used to get a letter that specifically requested the thousand dollars or the two thousand. So he knew what he had to do, but in this case, where's this coming from? This is a cemetery we don't even know about.
Can we, can we accrue the funds?
I jurisdiction, I think it's spent.
Reserve those funds, accrue the funds so that, or encumber them, whatever we use in the town.
No. It's a budget.
Not over, not over budget years, right?
No, you have to, it has to be contractual.
You'll lose it.
Arrangement.
Okay.
So what happened with that thousand-dollar check? We wrote it out to the wrong corporation? So we need to reissue it?
What was it, four thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, I got a copy, I have a copy of it right here.
So we reissue it, we reissue, we reissue that with, and that will apply to.
South Bay.
South Byfield.
They haven't requested theirs yet, I guess.
No.
They haven't, no.
They were, they were told to.
We don't, we don't call them up and say.
No, come get your money.
Come get your money. If they don't get their money, it goes to free cash.
Very few of them know it even existed.
Yeah, that's why we're paying issue.
It was our job as the commission to inform them that such funds exist.
Didn't tell you, you know, or we just didn't request the money.
All right, so what do we want to do, gentlemen? We need to move along.
Yeah, I don't know what, what's the request at this point.
So.
We don't know how much money we have, we just can't spend.
Perhaps you find out what hasn't been spent in the in the account if no one else has requested it.
Yeah, let's see what we have.
Let's find out what we got then, and then, and then at our next meeting, we can make a decision if we need to.
Yeah, remember.
And you guys need to get some numbers back to us.
There have been past funds, the others have been getting it, and this one has.
You know, in terms of what what would tree removal cost and and and.
Just that, that would be four.
That's a CPA project.
Fifteen, two fifteen.
Fifteen?
Mr. Chairman, so that I have this straight because, I think I have it straight, there are now four cemeteries.
Yes.
Rather than three.
Correct.
One didn't just pop up, though.
It was the original.
This is the oldest.
It's been there all the time.
Three and a half.
Been sliding under the radar.
Well, there's the thing, that cemetery used to be, was was the continual scout project. They have scouts.
That's the only way it was maintained.
Pick out the branches, cut the grass.
Right.
And maintain, you know, so look respectable.
Now, there is our fourth church building there on the site, and the cemetery is around it, okay? But that, that building has been sold as a private residence now. I guess for the third time maybe, but but we are still responsible. They only own. Right there, yes.
Five feet around their house.
Yes.
That's it?
You're overdoing the survey.
Something like that.
You can hear them talking inside their house in the summer when you're taking data.
Then going forward, as a veteran and commander of American Legion, I would request that as the selectmen, I believe, are the, have the veterans' grave as a responsibility to them, that there would be some type of oversight set up to what is, what actually takes place in all the cemeteries for the maintenance of those veterans' graves.
Yeah, the request that you indicated that cemetery should respond with should include, and let us know the number of veterans' graves you have actually. Because we we gotta get that information anyway.
Yeah, so Mike, some one person needs to kind of have accountability for this and report to the board of selectmen. I don't know, I guess the, in my capacity as the veteran services liaison, I don't necessarily want to just add it to the stuff that I don't have time to do, but I would suspect that it would make sense to have that one, that person in that position to to help liaise between their boards and the board of selectmen. That makes sense. I'll help you out.
All right, so you're you're requesting more information on the number of graves by your next meeting? Is that what you're asking me for?
I don't know if we're gonna.
Time to do that.
Yeah.
We got the time.
I don't think we'll get there, but.
Okay. Or you're trying to say.
It would be advisable if if the graveyards, whoever's in charge of all of those can do do an audit to figure out exactly where and what we have for veterans, and then, based on the numbers that we know right now, you know, maybe there's a, you know, some kind of allocation.
Twenty-nine now that you've got.
The other way is invoices on actually what's being, what's being spent.
I mean, remember, there's maybe money left in the account, the others haven't. So it's either, you got someone requesting it, you let them have it.
And this would be for tree work and that type of thing?
They haven't gotten anything in the past, and then in the future going forward, you you ask that of all, all requests, I would think.
All right, let's do this, to make this speedy. I'll help you guys over the next week or two, and I'll get the information that our board is requesting. I'll just kind of, Mike and I will work and just figure out what it is that we think we would like to get from you. We'll give it to you quickly so you can turn it around and and then I'll, if you guys have any questions as well to make sure that I'm asking. All right?
All right.
Let's do that.
By the next meeting you're talking about.
Yeah, and in the meantime, if I can, Joe, I have your email address, so I'll get to you guys.
Well, this'll be an ongoing thing at the commission because we have, we have not addressed that cemetery properly in the, as a historic asset, and we're moving onto that area of the town now with our surveys. So we have money to do, to bring it into the, into the database for the state. They've asked us to do it.
Okay.
And it's probably the first cemetery that would be on the national register because it's easily in the time period that makes it applicable for applying for that. And that would help us if we get it in the national register, get funds from the state.
Well, the church, the congregation itself, as Joe may have mentioned, is seventeen oh two. Okay, the first grave, if you walk out the back door, the house now, it was the church building, the fourth building. One, two, three, and four have been at the same location. Right on the left-hand side of the back door is the lady who formed, who helped form the congregation, Mahetabell Moody.
Oh, wow.
Seventeen oh two.
Her grave is there. She actually died before.
They finished the.
Correct.
Wow. All right.
All right, thank you, gentlemen, have a great night.
Thank you for your time.
Joe, I'll be in, I'll be in.
Appreciate it.
The next meeting, if you can make it, will there be?
The next Thursday or Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday? I'll be there.
All right, next item, approval of the NPDES P two small MS four general permit annual report, AKA in English, that would be stormwater management. And then we also have a memo of understanding to establish Merrimack Valley Stormwater Management Collaborative, and we have our esteemed town planner here.
Hi.
Thanks for your patience.
Oh. Sorry to keep. Busy activity. It's late, who's to say what's more important?
Humongous agenda tonight, and we are working like the devil to get to it, so talk to us.
Well, the MS four is the annual permit that the town needs to issue over to the DEP and the EPA and other agencies. It hasn't been updated yet in terms of the requirements of the permit. We're still expecting that to happen this year. It's meant to have happened sometime last two or three years, but it's basically an update of the previous reports that you've seen.
So you need us to vote to approve it and sign off on it tonight?
Correct, and that way I can send it on and we'll be in conformance for another year.
Mr. Chair, I have moved to approve the NPDES P two small MS four general permit annual report.
Sorry, guys.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have discussion.
Okay, a discussion, sorry.
I just, I, I'll vote aye.
Yes, discussion.
Aye.
Okay.
Just, I want to know, on the, on the back page, will you sign? Who makes up the director subcommittee of the Merrimack Valley? Because I noticed it says mayors and managers' coalition. I mean, how much of a say do we have on this? Do we have a number?
Say on.
This is something different, yeah, we just followed the report. Now, this is the memo of understanding and agreement.
Okay, so that's different. That's gonna be, that's gonna be separate from the report? Okay, great, then then.
We'll talk to that one. Okay, so all in favor, we said?
I, I voted aye.
Everybody?
Jerry.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
On this MOU for Merrimack Valley, so we have a memorandum of understanding to establish Merrimack Valley Stormwater Management Collaborative. Tell us what's going on here.
Through the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, this is something that they're wishing to establish with all the different municipalities that make up the MVPC, which is the regional planning agency that Georgetown is part of. Georgetown is one of fifteen, and this is an effort that Merrimack Valley is trying to establish where, where they access grants, and through the grants, they're able to allow different municipalities of MVPC to access either equipment or some of those funds to go towards stormwater management improvement programs. So there's different agencies. I believe Andover and Haverhill have signed up already, but they're still looking for other municipalities to become involved.
How many do they need for collaborative to fly?
Don't know.
Don't know.
Don't know, but I know they're trying to get every municipality to to get involved with it.
So we need a signature on a memo of understanding?
Correct, to show that we will become part of the collaborative and be part of the initiative.
Motion to approve signature of memorandum of understanding to establish Merrimack Valley Georgetown Stormwater Management Collaborative with Georgetown as a member.
Who's signature?
The discussion.
Chairman's signature.
Yeah, that's true.
That's his line.
So discussion.
Is there any cost associated with this?
I haven't been told of any cost. It it's to show, as I understand, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission will show that this collaborative is in effect in the go after to get funds for the purchase and joint sharing, a co-op of sorts of different. I see it as being stormwater cleanout equipment or access to camera, to pipe, to videotape stormwater systems that they would hold and then allow these different agencies to access the equipment or the grant funding.
If I may continue, Mike, did you have any idea on this? I mean, has anybody asked you to be part of this, I'll say managers' coalition?
No, I'm I'm not.
I mean, I take it this is like a board of directors? Even, I guess what I'm getting to is, even though we sign on and we want to be part of it, what, say, are we gonna have committee member? Will the town of Georgetown have a committee member on this?
Well, I, as the town planner Georgetown, I serve as commissioner with Merrimack Valley. I'm sure I'll be involved with this as opposed to an appointment needing to be made.
Yeah, but this sort of looks a little separate from that.
Well, we used to have one of us be that, that person, but they meet during the day often, and we didn't have. I tried for the first year and a half, two years, and I went to probably twenty meetings, and I, it was impossible with the, with the work schedule. So we can, in lieu of, have a designate from the town of Georgetown, which we had.
Yeah, but I think that's separate from this memorandum of understanding.
It could be, but I think that.
I mean, I I've been to some of their meetings also, I understand how that works. I just want to.
So to answer that question, this organizational structure here in this MOU on the page three says, stormwater will be, collaborative will be overseen by DPW Director Subcommittee of the Merrimack Valley Mayors and Managers Coalition, which is this, with equal representation from each of the fifteen participating municipalities. DPW reps will participate in stormwater deliberations conducted as part of regularly scheduled meetings and guide the initiatives undertaken with this collaborative.
So I guess then, do we need to vote Howard as our?
Appointee.
Appointee tonight.
It doesn't exist yet, does it?
Doesn't.
So this doesn't exist yet at this point?
They're looking to get people on board, but then it's DPW directors, so it would technically be our highway surveyor, correct? Unless we.
That's where I believe they're starting with, but if you believe otherwise, you can make a different appointment, I'm sure.
And that's later on down the line.
Right.
So, but they're trying to put this together, right?
They're they're still trying to establish to make.
It's just an MOU, isn't it?
And from town of Georgetown, we think this could be advantageous to us?
What's that?
We think this could be advantageous to us?
Yes.
So by starting the MOU, we're giving them some momentum, and then when they put it together, we can evaluate.
Once it's established, then I'm sure the guide wants to be much more specific about who the appointee or if it needs to be Peter Durkey or somebody.
Benefits are, all that stuff will come more apparent.
Right.
All right, in in your opinion, is this just more regional creep? I I'm not a fan personally of regionalization on many things because the town and the voters tend to lose their voice.
I I don't necessarily see it as creep. I I see it as an effort of Merrimack Valley to try to get a collaboration going for things that are gonna become more and more important, especially with the MS four permit being updated.
Speedlining and and uniformity.
Right, I think we're gonna see more and more goals and objectives and and needs derived out of these reports that are being updated. MS four, the natural hazard plan that was just done. There's a stormwater management committee that that exists in town, and once those are more and more definitive, Peter Durkey.
It's come from FEMA, basically?
FEMA, right, but but there's a natural hazard plan that Georgetown just did that lines five, ten-year plans of infrastructure improvements and things like that. When those needs are established, I see this as being the ability to meet those needs where a collaborative, instead of going to having to purchase equipment, there's this collaborative of being able to access the equipment.
Share and, okay, so you don't see any downside to us being involved in this?
No, I don't, but I understand, Stuart, with your concept of creep, and the creep may happen with other areas of Merrimack Valley, but I don't see it happening with this.
Yeah, I I know that when it comes to going after tip money and everything like that, we basically get shut out.
The the MPOs and things like that.
The MPOs and everything because the the cities and the mayors that are deeply involved, embedded into that, that group are the ones that are getting all the funding, and they're the ones that get to corral all the funding, and I think it's completely unfair, and we need to have a better share of voice at those meetings, you know, in the future.
And I think we will, if we get our needs established more towards what the MPO seems to be going towards, and that's transportation. Things for repaving on ninety-seven to one thirty-three. I know Gary has mentioned things about a traffic study for downtown. Once those come into play, I think we'll be able to access the funds stronger.
And you're the advocate or the the?
I attend the commissioners' meetings.
Yeah, the meeting, or representative as a team, whatever. Okay, all right, yeah, I just, you know, that's something to think about as far as driving a higher share of voice over there in in the MPO, you know, for those things, so.
Mr. Chair.
That'd be a good thing, yes.
I make a motion that we authorize.
I already did.
Did you?
Yes, we were in discussion, so all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Wow.
Keep up, please.
Thank you.
It's time to lose it.
Thank you, sir, have a great day.
Is this the end? You have a few more items?
Oh, we got a lot more items. We're gonna be here for another hour and a half, it looks like.
How long?
Another hour and a half? I think my flight leaves.
It's a hour.
Listen, um, we took care of that, we took, did I mention resignation of Thomas Falsarino from the library trustees? I did, okay, thank you, sir, for serving, we appreciate it, and library trustees could probably use some help, so if anybody's interested, please approach Janet, and she can direct you to the right place. How's that? Thanks for your service, much appreciated.
Could I ask a question?
No, moving on, no, go ahead.
Oh, I'm just wondering, um. Can we, for that, for an appointee there, can, can, it's a procedural, can we do sort of the opposite? I mean, can we, if they, when when they come up with somebody, can we vote and send one member? And if they've got the rest of the remaining members to make up the quorum, have it voted at their meeting? Or does it need to be here at the board of selectmen?
Needs to be here.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item number thirteen, insurance PEC agreement for approval. So this is the, it's item fourteen, this is the insurance, the employee, town employees?
Yes, it's the.
Insurance member.
That plan design changed after about three years since the selectmen have originally adopted the legislation. It was about January of two thousand and eleven. After several attempts, we finally have an agreement.
After several attempts, we finally have an agreement. We went through the formal process um and we actually came to impasse which kicked in the state panel procedure where the town picks a a representative member of the state panel, the union picks a state panel member and the state picks a state panel member. Once that was done, the PEC, the Public Employees Council came to the town, came to us and said, look, we really don't wanna go to the ca- uh the council and can we get a five-day extension and talk some more? And we said, okay, we'll talk, but two conditions, we're not gonna talk about the percentage of savings and we're not gonna talk about the um distribution, the contribution rate. From day one, those things were off the table to begin with by law. Unfortunately, they insisted on talking about it throughout the whole thirty-day and we never got anywhere, that's why we ended up in impasse, so we said, okay, we'll meet and I I met with the uh the Teachers Union head, uh which constitutes more than fifty percent of the PEC and that's who we had to agree with. We agreed to disagree, uh we were gonna go back to the council and then at the eleventh hour and fifty-ninth minute, I get a phone call and said, uh we'll agree, we don't wanna, we're not going to the council. So, so we have an agreement, we're sharing twenty-five percent of the first-year savings with the, all the employees. If we just did the union employees, we'd get hit with a discrimination suit from those that would be. We were advised by Maya not to, uh we were advised that we had to do it with with all subscribers. That's the way the the law was written.
Okay.
So there's a pro- approximately a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in savings, twenty-five percent of that's forty-four thousand change and that'll be, uh we've agreed to do a uh premium holiday in December, which means they and and based on the numbers, it will be about a half a month's premium per employee, um depending upon, and it'll be prorated for family plans versus uh single plans. Family plans will get a greater share of that savings. And it'll be probably the first payroll period in December, so it's sort of like a Christmas bonus.
Yeah, so you basically don't pay the premium, or they don't pay the premium?
That's right.
Okay.
Of course, right.
Okay.
So uh we have a mem- memorandum of understanding between the town and the Public Employee Committee and I'd like you to uh approve it.
All right, so I'd entertain a motion for the memorandum of agreement pursuant to eight oh one CRM fifty-two dot oh four parentheses for by and between the town of Georgetown and Georgetown Public Employee Committee. Any discussion?
Yes.
Mike, how do we budget for this in the budget? Do we take the savings anticipating that this would happen?
Um, yes, not not all of the savings.
Okay.
So it's.
So they're potentially being.
That, the 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 number is fat on the side of the savings.
Okay, and when we look at this, we're not increasing premiums on employees.
No, not at all, they they've gone down about four percent.
Okay, so that's good to hear. Secondly, is it, are we, by plan design, are we changing the co-pays, is that?
Uh, the, some are gonna see changes.
Yep.
Uh and and by changes, some are going, the co-pays are gonna drop and some are gonna go up slightly. And and the majority will, I don't know if it's a majority, but it's probably a third, a third, a third, uh because we go into the savings results in two things, we will have for the first time a co-pay for emergency room and hospitalization. We didn't have that before, we still have no deductibles, that was the, we, when we talked a long time ago, that was what GIC had, the the their biggest savings were achieved through very large deductibles and larger co-pays. So we, the the board opted not to go for the big or for any co-pay, I mean deductible.
Deductible.
But we we had a a slight change depending upon the doctor group you belong to and the medical facility you go to, their tier, there's tier one, two and three. The one, the fir- one tier is, you know, ten dollars co-pay, the other one is a fifteen-dollar co-pay, which is what they pay now and and the third one is a twenty-five-dollar co-pay. They're not based on quality, no one makes, well, they're, they are based on quality because they all have to meet a minimum quality standard, but after that, it's based on how well their health outcomes are and and how well they manage their their uh their their funds. The the example that we always give, uh if you go to Anna Jake's for an MRI, you pay about six hundred and fifty dollars. If you go to Bo- Mass General, you pay fifteen hundred dollars, same exact machine, no difference. And nine times out of the ten, the ra- all radiology is read in in India. So uh there's just the location of the MRI machine because Mass General has huge overhead, Anna Jake's doesn't.
So you're saying in the plan at the end of the year, they look at that as far as where the where the where the dollars overall in the plan were spent and how?
Well, they monitor, we'll get a a very good uh usage analysis.
Okay.
But it it, it's not just our usage, it's, you know, the hospital in general.
Okay. All right, further questions?
Discussion?
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, item fifteen, July fourth holiday week town hall hours. Fill us in, guys.
As you know, uh probably know, the Fourth of July is on a Friday this year, uh which would kick in a uh floating holiday since town hall anyway is is closed. Would like to know if the board wants to consider, instead of having the floating holiday be floating all over the place, they do have to use the floating holiday within ninety days. By policy, uh we do the same thing on um, uh what's the other holiday year?
We did it for, we did it at Christmas, I don't know, we did it this year, we may have this year, depending on how they fall, if they fall on a Friday.
I'd like to get the feeling of the selectmen if they wanna close on uh July third on the on the Thursday, it's closed town hall.
From a management perspective, what do you guys recommend? Because you're the one who has to manage the people, not us, so.
Well, uh for two reasons, um I recommend it's July third. Uh one, that week of July is probably, I don't know what's slower, Christmas or or Fourth of July week, it's 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 dead here. And managing, not even managing, because everybody does their own thing, uh with their floating holiday and where we have one and two-person offices that would constant require one of the, you know, an office like ZBA or it would require them to be closed another day.
So I move that we have the floating holiday be unanimously used on July third, two thousand fourteen.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
On that for discussion, but.
Any discussion?
Seems to make sense to me.
If I may, I I, how did it work out? I I believe we did one of this last year, I mean, eh because we can't really mandatory tell those people that they need to take it off, right? We we can say that.
Yeah.
We can say that town hall is closed. And you have to take your floating holiday that day.
Moving along.
Okay, I just didn't wanna get us in any legal bind or anything and and you don't see anything that particular week where this would be tough on the public, there's there's no bills that are, I mean, they're not, taxes aren't due till August first, is it? Right, and and most, most people are getting away, you know, either taking the whole week off for vacation or.
Not coming to town hall.
Right, you're getting ready to.
I'm not gonna be out here at this town hall.
Travel for the holidays.
Any further discussion?
Couldn't pay it to seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, item number eighteen, appointments for fiscal year fifteen to fiscal year nineteen.
Uh Stu, before you get into the appointments, could we do the line item transfers, number seventeen?
Oh, I thought we were passing on that tonight, no?
No, actually, um it would be appropriate to to do it tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Chair, I move that we support the line item transfers as outlined in the June second memo by Michael Farrell, Town Administrator.
Second.
Uh, discussion?
The um, we came up short by uh when we were budgeting for a department's health insurance, we're missing one, one month um premium. That's what the three eighty-three sixty-nine is and the uh highway wages, uh we've known about that since we were going to address it at at the town, at the fall town meeting because the highway surveyor, there was miscommunication and and the overtime was not included in the highway operating budget. And it didn't look like we had enough free cash at the the fall, uh spring town meeting to cover it, so we're resorting to doing line item transfers within the highway budget. He has enough surplus in those other accounts um to cover the fifteen thousand, twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents, so we're just and because it's going from purchase of services to purchase of, to personnel services, w- we do have the authority to change purchase of services around to another purchase of service, but the law does not permit us to cross personnel with with services, so we need approval by both the the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee to make that type of line item transfer.
Questions, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Seven five zero, all right, so under appointments for fifteen and through nineteen, on item number nineteen here, Harbor Master, Harbor Master appointment change from Chief Cudmore, I will read it. As discussed with Town Administrator Straider Farrell last week, I'm requesting the following appointments to the position of Harbor Master, they covered two great ponds. In Georgetown, Reserve Officer Michael Broderick, Harbor Master Jeffrey French, Assistant Harbor Master. Again, this is our chief of police making this request, I will not be requesting the department acquire of Carl Schrader in, uh as in years past due to the fact that the position would be better served by a sworn police officer, similar appointments were created with the animal control program several years ago. It's been very successful and the continued demands of training and liability enforcement positions such as animal control and harbor masters should be filled by sworn police officers.
What's the um term?
One year.
One year term.
So one year, I think.
I move to appoint uh Reserve Officer Michael Broderick as Harbor Master with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I'm a little confused by this because we previously appointed Carl Schrader, it would term to expire June thirtieth of fourteen. So when does, is, because if you look at the list, we've got Broderick in there, but he's not, he wasn't the Harbor Master. Carl Schrader was until June thirtieth, has he been removed in as Harbor Master because he's been sworn in, right?
No, he's, yeah, I just updated the list.
Right, right, so that's why I'm just a little confused.
No, he hasn't been removed, he's just not being reappointed.
Right, so so when does this take effect?
July one.
July one.
Did you say that on, in your motion?
Well, these are all for.
I think I just didn't remove that date there.
These are all for appointments for next year.
Right. So beginning July one, we'll have a new.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanna make that clear because.
Well, Mr. I, yeah, we used to have one for each pond, so was was the officer one for one of the ponds and Carl Schrader was for the other?
No, I don't know.
There were two volunteers. John Bell, I think, was the other one. And he resigned and he was, and no, and no one was appointed, uh the the one Harbor Master was ostensibly in charge of both ponds. Mr. I, I would make a statement if I may, Mr. Chair, I mean, many, many towns that have harbors, because some are older, still have harbor masters and they're not police officers, so, but I guess uh Chief feels this would benefit Georgetown, I would have liked to have discussed it with him, but I suppose I could have, and I was going to try to reach out and do that, but didn't get there. Well, a, a lot of towns still have police. Yeah, it it goes both ways, yeah. Like Sa- Salem, New Hampshire, Salem, Mass is a police officer.
I believe Ipswich is also.
Yeah, and up until last year, Manchester was a police officer. They hired a new one and he's not part of the police department anymore.
And this is about public safety, right? So I'm I'm comfortable taking the lead from our head of public safety. As it were, but it's good.
Any further discussion? Okay, I just wanna bring that up, so uh um there we go, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I'm gonna oppose, nay.
And stands? What's that?
I move to appoint Jeffrey French, the Assistant Harbor Master with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Discussion, all right, we need a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion?
Begins July one, right?
Yep.
Yeah, is the uh gonna be any difference in pay by giving these, now these offices the position? I mean.
No, not that I.
Harbor Master's unpaid, isn't it?
It's an unpaid position.
Yeah, I'm, no, I I don't think it's, they're gonna be paid.
You get a boat. They get to be out there on a sunny day, on a paddle boat. All right.
Or if they, if they are, they're gonna be doing it on shift while they're.
Right.
While they're being paid for being a police officer.
All right, further discussion, no, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose again, nay.
Oppose, thank you. All right, so we have a lot of appointments here to do tonight, so do we wanna start with the police, is that how we, should we do that?
Start from the beginning.
You wanna start from the beginning?
Yeah, let me file through until I can't get my words together, yeah, so.
Excuse me.
I move we reappoint Paul Nelson to the Affordable Housing Task Force with a term expiring on six thirty, two thousand seventeen. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I move that we appoint Timothy Garrity to the Affordable Housing Trustees with a term to expire on six thirty, two thousand sixteen.
You could do both those together, listen, okay?
Should we be doing it though, we're members of the committee?
I'm just making the motion.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh I move that we appoint, uh reappoint Paul Nelson to the Affordable Housing Trustees with a term to expire at six thirty, two thousand sixteen.
Discussion?
We need a second, second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I move that we reappoint Joe Crane to the Board of Health with a term to expire on six thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Joseph Crane.
Did I say?
I think you said Bill Crane.
Second, I said Joe, I think.
Oh, oh, did you? I thought you said Bill, I'm sorry, I'm going hallucinating.
All right, I need all the help I can get, you know.
Trust me, man, you know, me too.
All right.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we reappoint. I move that we reappoint to the Cable TV Advisory Committee. Anyone have any problem with by listing them all?
Take them all.
Okay, Charles Davis, Dan Walsh, Lynn Lutreskowski, Kelsey Bresnahan Sousa. All with terms to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that we.
On what, CIP? Looking at CIP?
No, conservation.
Hold on, what?
I wanna have a conversation on that.
There was no yes, there was no yes as well.
There was no yeses on CIP.
Oh, okay, well, there's.
Oh, I see.
No, but don't we have CIP, two of them there that expire on six, so that means they're not looking to go? Are you even back? Okay, just wanna make sure.
Okay, uh, Council of Aging, so I, uh, I move that we reappoint the following members to the Council on Aging. Janine DeJardin, Claire Mammon Chandler, Noiz, all with terms to expire on six thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Sorry, missed one, and I also move that we reappoint Corona Magnar to the Council of Aging, term expired six thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Aye.
I mean, second. All those, discussion, all those in favor?
I move that we reappoint the following alternates to the Council of Aging, Carolyn She- She- Shehan and Ann Stewart. With terms to expire on six thirty, two thousand and fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cultural Council, um, I move that we reappoint Patricia Durkey to the Cultural Council with a term to expire six thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, let's see.
Don't forget to say aye, then.
Aye, sorry. I move that we reappoint Donald Cudmore, Police Chief, to the Emergency Management Director position with a term to expire. Six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I.
Aye, okay.
I also, um, let's see, so Dean Julian has not been a member, right, so we're doing a reappointments and an appointment, I.
He is new, the chief added him new this year to the, um, as an Assistant Director.
Okay, so I move that we reappoint the following.
You can just appoint him, you don't have to reappoint him, right?
Yeah, appoint all.
Just appoint all.
I, I move that we appoint all, all of them. I move that we appoint all, uh, the following for the Assistant Directors to the Emergency Management. Um, Committee, which is Al Beardsley, Fire Chief, Tom, uh, DeJoy, and Dean Julian, with terms to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move that we, uh, point the following to the Emergency Management Team, Peter Durkey, Deborah Rogers. With terms to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we appoint Don Cudmore, Police Chief, to the Emergency Response Coordinator position. With a term to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I also move that we, um, appoint Al Beardsley, Fire Chief, to the, as the Assistant Director of the Federal Emergency Management Association. With a term to expire, uh, six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move we appoint, um, Tom, Thomas DeJoy as a team member with the Federal Emergency Management Association. With a term to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Move that we, uh, reappoint Mike Farrell as the Acting Finance Director with a term to expire on six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move that we reappoint Al Beardsley, Fire Chief, as the Forest Warden with a term to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, I move that we appoint the following individuals to the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee. Deborah Rogers, Steve Brzezinski, Howard Snyder, and Peter Durkey, all with terms to expire on six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Okay, uh, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I also move that we reappoint the following individuals to the members of the Hazard, the Hazard Mitigation Planning Committee. Al Beardsley, Don Cudmore, Miss Schofield, Mike Farrell, Nimmellet, all with terms to expire on six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, Historical Commission, um, Lou Dispenza and Joan App and Ed Desjardins all contacted me today that they wanna be reappointed.
Say those again?
Ed, Joe, and Lou.
Lou Dispenza as a regular member to two thousand seventeen, and Joan App and Ed Desjardins as, um, associate members. And Mr. Japani.
I'm in, yeah.
Are those all seventeen, all of them?
No, the three associates of two thousand fifteen, and Lou is two thousand seventeen.
Okay.
So all the associates are in?
Yes.
And those are to two thousand fifteen, and then Lou is in till two thousand seventeen.
Yes.
I move that we appoint Lou Dispenza to the Historic Commission with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, it's one, I move that we appoint Joseph Knapp, Edward Desjardins, and Philip Japani as associate members to the Historical Commish- Commission with a. Term to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Keep going, brother.
Uh, I move that we appoint, uh, Howard Snyder, Tom Planer, as the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission Representative. With a term to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move that we appoint the following to the OPEV.
Right above that is.
Okay, okay. I move that we. Tough job, Phil, yeah. Trying to step up and help. I approve.
No good deed, baby.
I approve. I move that we appoint the, uh, to the, Deb Rogers to the Northeast Mosquito Control. Mosquito Larvae Siding in Spring, um, with a term to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'm tired, I'm gonna screw these names up, but I move that we appoint to the OPEV Trust Fund Trustees, uh, Jacqueline Colmo, Mary McNamoney. Stuart Egenberg, Sari, Sandra Garrity, and Michael Farrell with a term to expire, uh, six thirty, two thousand fifteen. Uh, I move to amend that my motion by removing, uh, do we hear anything from Sandy?
No, and I wasn't sure if she would still be the chair, so that.
Alright, I move to amend my motion to, uh, remove, uh, Sandy Garrity from that list.
Second on the amendment.
Got your votes, too.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Of the amendment?
Yep.
The amendment, so now we vote.
Now we vote on the individuals.
Okay, all in favor on the individuals. Do we have a second on that?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I move that we, uh, appoint David Thompson to, uh, Lieutenant in the Police Department. For a term to expire, uh, six thirty, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, the term expires in sixteen, why are we reappointing for seventeen?
They always do this, they always have discussions.
It's part of the union, because they're all.
Yeah, but I could see doing fourteen to fifteen, but not sixteen to seventeen. Doesn't sound right.
We do this every year, and there was a reason.
No, but not three years out, though, we always do one year, don't we?
No, we do this every year, and it always extends beyond out.
Yes, we have this crazy conversation, and the math doesn't make.
You probably ask this question every year.
But that's what.
I have never been able to figure it out. It's because that's the way we've always done it.
Alright, so, should we not be doing that, or what?
I think it's something in there that they're appointed.
Well, I've read the contract, there's nothing in the contract that says that.
Well, let's do it next time and just find out why. It's a good question to answer, but we've asked that question every time.
Yeah, these are all sixteen, so should we just reappoint, let's reappoint the fourteens, then.
Alright, you have a mission, Mike. Get to the besides.
Another bullet point there on your follow-up list.
Just so you know, when I was Chair, we did it that way.
I know. That's not a good reason to do anything.
Thanks for asking the question there, Mr. Serfus.
You did it when you were Chair, too, Dave.
I know, but that doesn't make sense.
I move to appoint Mark Anderson, Tyler Duchaine, Joan Vallone, Keith DiGio.
DiGio.
Di- DiGio, I'm sorry.
DiGio.
DiGio.
DJ, is that spot, okay. Dean Julian, Joanne Ballard, Jay Martel, Michael Broderick, uh, Jeffrey French, Heather LeFaire. Uh, Jonathan Henriquez, uh, Matthew. The names are getting hard.
Carapalucci.
Carapalucci, uh, Paprin, we gotta do these earlier, like, Scott Yanosik and Henry Offshewski. Who are the Reserve Officers for the Police Department, with a term to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They only even Smith is the last name.
I do apologize, those aren't important, it's just.
He can't get the Italian names, just can't do it.
Getting a little punchy, man.
Anything with a vowel, you're having trouble.
Uh, here we go.
There you go.
Derek Jones, uh, I'm appointing, I move to make, to appoint Derek Jones to Animal Control Officer with a period to expire. Six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, I'm going back to you, buddy, I'm losing it.
I'll do, you want me to do some?
There you go.
Alright, I'm, Mr. Chairman, I move to, uh, point, uh, Keith DiGio, Dean Julian, Reed Wilson. As Assistant Animal Control Officers with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Donald Cudmore, Police Chief, and Arthur Murphy Junior as Constables with a term to, oh, can't do it that way, back it up. Uh, I moved that we, um, appoint Donald Cudmore as a Constable with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Arthur Murphy Junior as a Constable with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 The Harbor Masters, we already did. School Crossing Gods, Mr. Chairman, I moved that, uh, moved to appoint, uh, Kenneth Woodbury. George Kaminsky, Joseph Pashad, and Larry Mintz as school crossing gods with terms to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Michael Farrell, Town Administrator, as the Sexual Harassment Grievance Officer with a term to expire. June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Donald Cudmore, Police Chief, as the statewide anti-terrorism, unified response network. Uh, member to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, and also, uh, appoint to that same committee, which is the statewide anti-terrorism unified response network. Thomas DeJoy and Al Beardsley with, uh, terms to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, um, alright, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Richard Boucher. To the, uh, Registrar of Voters, filling a Republican spot with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, School Building Committee, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Stuart Eg-.
Okay, sorry. Never mind.
Stuart Egenberg, Tilly Evangelista, Pam Lundquist, Peter Durkey, Jeff Wade, George Kaminsky, Ellie Sikowitz, Michelle Smith, Kerry Strauss. Stoss, excuse me, Eric Zadina, and Jim Lacy to the School Building Committee with terms to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Are you cool, saying it on it?
Yeah. No worries.
Aye.
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 Aye. Uh, also, to that same committee, School Building Committee, I, uh, moved that we put, uh, appoint Mike Farrell, Carol Jacobs, Margaret Maher. Mar, Peter Lucia, and Joan Laporto as non-voting members to the School Building Committee with terms to expire six thirty, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, let's see, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Deb Rogers, Steve Brzezinski, Howard Snyder, Peter Durkey, and Mike Farrell. To the Stormwater Management Committee with terms to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Carol Jacobs, Superintendent, as a non-voting member to the Synthetic Turf Advisory Committee. With a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Copelman and Page as our Town Council with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion?
One quick question, I, I think it's part of some discussion we had, there was talk about you, whether we go out to bid. Or something for a new council after a certain period of time.
That was, uh, auditors.
Auditors, alright, not Town Council. Got you, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Jacqueline Colmo as our Treasurer slash Tax Collector. To expire, uh, term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Pam Rogers as our Assistant Treasurer slash Collector, with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mr. Chairman, I move that we appoint Paul Shealan, Shilahan, yeah, I got it right there. Uh, to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a term to expire six thirty, two thousand nineteen.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Can I, discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Um, when's the last time we had anybody in from, that was, we were reappointing on ZBA?
Never.
You think it's needed?
Do we have, is there a Chair, do we have a recommendation from the Chair for this person's reappointment?
Mr. Moore is the Chair.
Well, let's get one.
Let's hold off.
Yeah, I made the motion, so, uh, did somebody second it?
No.
No, right?
No, we did have a second.
They did, but we hadn't voted, so.
Yeah.
So we're in discussion, do you wanna withdraw your motion?
Yeah, I'd like to withdraw my motion, Mr. Chairman. And nothing against Paul, but it's just a, the committee that I think that we maybe have to have a little more, be a little more in touch with.
Okay. Can we get a notice from our Chairman of the ZBA? If he and the board are going to reappoint Mr. Shilhan? With their.
He did send a letter asking for reappointment, it wasn't from the board.
At least from the Chair, as far as a recommendation on reappointment.
Would, uh, someone, uh, make a motion to, um, reappoint me to the Veterans District, as a Veterans District Representative?
So move.
Second. Uh, discussion, all those, term to expire when?
It's a one year.
Two thousand fifteen? All those, discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 What page are you on, like, way back, right, in the way back?
It was right before, on ZBA.
So we're on the last, we're done.
This is the police and whatever, boy, I haven't heard someone in a while. Reaching out to the boards that I haven't had an explanation.
Um, we should also get a letter from the, uh, Concom Chairman.
We doing the minutes or are we holding those for the next meeting?
You're, what's the pleasure of the board, you wanna do the minutes or hold them for next meeting?
I think adjourning would be cool.
Just one of them that we talked about the last time.
We had a, yes, we had a discussion point on the last one.
Do you wanna wait on them, okay?
You guys wanna wait?
We're bringing out two of them, we only have one, what's the one you?
Okay, so we'll carry those forward, the minutes, don't forget to sign the warrant, gentlemen.
Got it.
If everybody's done that. And we have some, did we get everything on here? It looks like we got everything on here, except for, you know, some of the selectmen stuff that we're moving off. Okay, so, uh, I will attend a motion to adjourning.
One, one quick question, uh, just one item just to bring up, and I don't want to put Mike on the spot, but I guess I'm gonna put him on the spot. Uh, we voted at town meeting to adopt local option meals tax. When does that become implemented and have the business has been notified?
Well, we notified DOR, there was a special letter that the town clerk had to send in.
Right.
Then we were supposed to be, receive something back from DOR, asking us to give them a list of all restaurants in, in town.
Yeah.
We have not, I have not seen that. I don't know if they sent it to Janet, uh, to Janice. I, I doubt that they have, because I think she would have told me.
Right.
So, we're.
Following up.
We're, yeah.
Reading.
We're in the process.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, just to let you know, the next meeting, I will be traveling, so I will not be present on the twenty-third.
Motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Second.
I'm seconding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, good night.
You can't say so.